I'll never put it that way.
Call meeting to order, please rise for the pledge and remain standing for a moment of silence.
My pledge is to defy the United States of America into being a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please have a moment of silence for our first responders and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice in service. Thank you. Start with public comment, Chief.
Good evening. August was a slow month, thirteen fire calls in the borough, forty-two fire calls overall. Average response time was four minutes from the time if we got the call till the time we showed up at somebody's house in the borough. This is significantly longer than usual. And one of my sleeping drivers decided he's gonna take a couple of weeks vacation this year. And that kinda hurt us, so you relied a little bit more on home response. Guys like me, it's a little tough to get out of bed at three o'clock in the morning, get moving, get the cobwebs out.
Four minutes is still pretty good.
Yeah, like better. Our personnel spent eighty point two hours mitigating emergencies. Interesting note that three of our top fire responders for the month of August were over sixty years old. That's not a good thing. Our membership is starting to get older and trying to get people vetted in order to get, when the fire trucks is getting tougher. We had thirty-seven hours of training for the month, the August amongst nine firefighters. I know that usually on monthly basis, I get up there and brag about how everybody's doing, how we're doing in the fire service here. You've got a good fire department over here. We had a couple of things surface in the last few months. One of the things I told you people at the beginning that I'd be very transparent, I'd be as transparent as possible when I was giving information to y'all. So, a little transparency here. We have found a couple of issues, we're working on, we're fixing policies. One was with driver's training. Before anything happened, we were able to fix a negative policy, we added hours to our, to our driver's training category. Problem, what that is, takes longer to get people turned over to drive. So, that's, that's holding up the process. One was on auto extrication. We have a lot of younger guys riding the fire trucks nowadays. Shouldn't say that, I take that back, we have a few younger guys riding the fire trucks nowadays. Their inexperience shows in certain areas. And over the last two months, they've been put, pressed into service doing things that more experienced people usually do. We were able to go over to J and K Savage in York. Mr. Darrow let us cut a bunch of cars up, has made an amendment, we can come back anytime. So, we're working on the extrication basics of our job. Over the next couple of months, we're gonna be in the neighborhoods, making sure addresses are correct. We've, we've found some deficiencies on some of our computer-based address systems. So, if you see us in the neighborhood and we're getting out of fire trucks, if the lights aren't on, it's not an emergency, it's just we're walking around, we might be doing a what-if drill.
Chief, could I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm sorry to stop you, but this is a good time to bring something else up. While you're out doing that, if you come across apartments, could you check? List the ones that do not have Knox boxes, if it's, I believe, what, three or more? And report that back, because we've gotta get on those Knox boxes for your sake too, because you're gonna have to break in windows, doors.
Correct.
And we do have a, an ordinance that, that apartment buildings do have Knox boxes. I know everybody down at Franklin Square, they have all that Knox boxes, we have a couple other businesses too. So, if you define businesses, please don't be, you know, hesitant to bring that back. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
While you're doing that.
Just, um, wanted to let you know in the next couple of months, we're getting the colder weather back, really appreciate it. We put it out there, everybody check their smoke detectors and everything, fiber bench in the month coming up, so, um, we'll be out and about. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Devin Taylor?
You can move that mic around, Devin, so we can hear you better.
That's Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Taylor.
We'll start out with my name and who I am, my name is Devin Taylor, I'm a New Freedom resident. I'm here for a few reasons today, uh, let me get some papers organized, I have four years' worth of minutes in front of me, we're gonna talk about all four of them. But before we do that, we're gonna ask you, Mr. Schaefer, why my speech from last month and the hard copy, that's not in this agenda for the public to review? And it's not actually available for inspection? I thought I made it pretty clear that I wanted that added to the minutes and made available for inspection.
This is public comment, not public dialogue.
Okay, that's fine. All right. Good evening, my name is Devin Taylor and I'm a New Freedom resident. I'm here today to follow up on questions that arrived after my speech last month. Due to time constraints on public comment, please expect very little back and forth debate or comment. I would consider the speech I'm giving tonight more of a presentation than a speech, because apparently that means something. I have submitted a right to no request, to this agency requesting statements of financial interest for all of you, uh, for the last four years, as I investigate, um, those statements. I have reason to believe that several of you have willfully or otherwise left things out of Block thirteen and disclosing your directorships or officerships within nonprofit organizations across our community. Now, I'll drive it down, paint the picture between nepotism, collusion, favoritism, and other associated behaviors between Andy Bobby, Joni Mason, Dave Reisdorf, Jenny Nugent-Bauer, Robert Dixon, Kelly Sala, and Berkentine. In March of twenty twenty, Andy Bobby nominated Dave Reisdorf to come back to this council. In May of twenty twenty, Andy Bobby explained away a bond production for his good buddy Bryce Berkentine. And he got that motion to go through. In August of twenty twenty, Berkentine was kind enough to donate carpet and padding to Public Works' new bunk room. In October of twenty twenty, Andy Bobby acted as the VFW spokesman for the reed laying program. In November of twenty twenty, Andy Bobby motioned to draft a land lease for the VFW. Were you not a member of the VFW Building Committee at the time, Mr. Bobby? You're not the president of that committee, are you? Robert's Rules for Recuse will kinda tell us when we need to recuse or when we should recuse, but there's nothing that really says when we should or should not motion. I'm concerned that Mr. Bobby and Mr. Reisdorf continue to use their positions to get motions to the floor to vote by deceiving the people, by actively leaving things off of their statements of financial interest to include board positions at the VFW auxiliary and at additional committees within the VFW. The "I don't have voting rights, I'm not a member, I'm just auxiliary," that's, that's deceiving and it's, it's borderline untruthful. You have access to thousands of dollars as the president of the auxiliary of the VFW. And you, Mr. Bobby, as the president of the Building Committee, have direct relations, um, of all forms with, with Berkentine Real Estate Group. And you continue to deceive the people that you are not involved as you are involved. One of you has erred and heeded my advice to remove one of your hats. Dave Reisdorf is no longer the Canteen Manager of VFW post seventy twelve. Would you have any, do you have any comments to make on that, or do you wish not to comment?
I don't mind commenting.
Why are you no longer the Canteen Manager, Mr. Reisdorf?
We were looking for a manager to bring us to the new building, I wasn't that guy, and we, and then a better guy came along.
I just wanna get your, I just wanna get your statement on this platform, so that's all I need. All right, so we'll continue to go through this. In January twenty twenty-one, uh, there was a public dispute between Joni Mason, Andy Bobby, and a concerned resident over the Berkentine building issues. I have those minutes here. It seems to me that Andy Bobby and Joni Mason actually like to have disputes with residents. Uh, in May, on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, Andy Bobby actually texted Sergeant Teague in response to a disorderly conduct at the Borough Council meeting, effectively getting police enforcement activated based off of hearsay in a text message. I have the police report stating that that was a chain of custody of the complaint. And now we have Borough Council President exercising what I would deem as executive privilege to, uh, you know, exercise law enforcement action against citizens of his, of his, of his borough. I'm not even done here, I'm sorry, I, I, I do have a laundry list of things to talk about, but I don't even have to paint this picture for the rest of you who can't see themselves. I'm glad, uh, you know, Dave has his daughter in the back to support her, uh, and, you know, additional VFW associates here. Because it is very difficult for me as a VFW member to hold all of you accountable. Because you know the rules, I know the rules. I can't get you out, you can't get me out, so now I'm here. Because you are unethical individuals, you are unprofessional.
No, we're not.
You have your entitlement.
No, we're not.
In September of twenty twenty-one, Andy Bobby again acts as a VFW spokesman. In May of twenty twenty-two, there was a vote to waive VFW land development fees, good job Dave, Andy, and he both recused from that one. Uh, in August of twenty twenty-two, the Russell and Higgy families started expressing their concerns on stormwater drainage issues. This is reiterating that community concerns have been going on for years and less than heard. These were just readressed and these are years old. In December of twenty twenty-two, Jenny Nugent-Bauer magically appeared on the subsequent annual, uh, subsequent annual committee. Uh, and then, then we really started getting into the fun. In February twenty twenty-three, Andy and Dave worked together to censure Erica. Uh, Dave's daughter Kelly Sala magically appeared on the subsequent annual committee. And Dave also voted and motioned on file, allowing the VFW to use Veterans Park for Veterans Day fundraising.
Real quick, um, we were nominated.
This isn't on the agenda.
This is an interrogation, we were nominated to be on the committee.
In April twenty twenty-three, Andy's motion is to give Robert Dixon and the North Central Railway fifty percent of their amusement tax backs. Why are these motions coming from you, Mr. Bobby? Are you not, are you and Bob and I intimately engaged in day-to-day business outside of this room at the VFW on the Building Committee? Your relationships that you continue to extend or use your positions as the Borough Council President to give businesses and entities in our borough money back is nepotism. You're using your position to help your buddies' businesses succeed and thrive in New Freedom. In May of twenty twenty-three, Andy and Dave worked together to push Jenny Nugent-Bauer's proposal for stormwater management ordinance. Once in, once again, Andy and Dave get, uh, you know, together, get motions to the floor. In June of twenty twenty-three, Andy Bobby appointed Robert Dixon and Jenny Nugent-Bauer to the Marge Goodfellow Improvement Committee. Always just giving your friends jobs, right, Andy? Uh, in October twenty twenty-three, Dave helped Andy get the last-minute budget conversation moved up, as well as Dave motioning to approve the VFW land lease. Again, we talked about when it's ethically, uh, correct.
When was that? When was that?
October twenty twenty-three, I'll pull the minutes for you, Dave.
What's your agenda?
Read it, read it.
The whole town wants to know what your agenda actually is.
It's okay. Let me get to it.
I'll get him for you.
If you're gonna accuse me, you grab some damn facts. You won't even say a lie, it's up to now.
Do you think that?
You won't even say a lie, it's up to now. You got that? I'm out, I'm out. I told you I was gonna be out, I'm out. My resignation will be on your desk tomorrow.
That's a smart decision. Do you think I'm here otherwise?
You're an idiot.
I'll see you in court.
It's about to get really exciting.
No, I'll see you in court, I've got you on liable, you're on, you're on public. Any court.
Okay. All right, give me two seconds, October, uh... October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, agenda change. President Bobby made a motion seconded by Dave Reisdorf to move up a discussion or review of the proposed twenty twenty-four budget to immediately following public comment. Motion carried. All right, where's my other highlight mark, let's take a look. New Freedom VFW seventy twelve land development plan. Dave Reisdorf made a motion seconded by Burnell Wildison to approve the VFW post seventy twelve land development plan. Upon clarification, Dave Reisdorf abstained, therefore the motion died. It does not mean, the, the issue is that this council has continued to let individuals who have ongoing conflicts of interest motion, vote, or second. This came to a head when Andy was implicated in letters of resignation that involved the VFW. And when you guys allowed Dave and Andy to both vote on those letters and additional surroundings, we had dipped into a very, very gray area, a very, very gray area, that these two gentlemen have more or less, you know, to, I, I'll say it, I will say it. Willfully or otherwise, you have left information off of your statement of financial interest that deceives or misleads the American people into your investments, into your interests. For conversations with the State Ethics Commission and the complaint that I am filing, you are in the wrong. Block thirteen, you should have disclosed any directorship or officership that you had within the VFW auxiliary. There's a reason he's not stopping me, because I am within my right to say this, and he knows it to be true.
You obviously can say whatever you want, because you sit there and lie all the time, so it really doesn't make any difference.
Then you can take me to court.
Maybe, well, that, never mind.
Since Andy was able to successfully bring his buddy Dave back to this council in twenty twenty, they have forgotten many items to the floor for vote. Based off my quick four-year, four-year review of our minutes, it's pretty, pretty easy to say that they almost never oppose each other, can almost always rely on the other for a second, and when the VFW is involved, they are allowed to motion or vote. Dave and Andy have deceived the people in New Freedom for too long, what other positions have you held or do you hold? I know which ones. And I think it's time that you tell the people of New Freedom how many hats you actually wear, Mr. Bobby. Thank you for your time.
I know I'm not, I'm not supposed to address this, but I'm going, I am going to say one thing. You can stick around if you want.
No, it's okay, this isn't a Q and A, you made that very clear today. I don't want another text message sent to Sergeant Teague, and, you know, need to be possibly arrested on the spot for exercising my personhood right. I'm gonna say, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, just a couple of quick things for the record. We recuse ourselves when we have a financial interest where our, and, and it's very specific. The Ethics Commission says that we have to have something in either ourselves receiving a financial interest, our families receiving a financial interest, or a business that we have receiving a financial interest. All of us up here work for no remuneration, so I, we don't have to...
Can you text Sergeant Teague for me, uh, there's three people outside harassing me, I can't get to my car. Can you text Sergeant Teague for me, since you like to do that?
I didn't text Sergeant.
I got the police report, you're gonna deny it right here on camera in front of the people in New Freedom? Did you text Sergeant Teague on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four in regards to my actions?
I did not.
Okay, so now I've got a false police report?
I, I'm just telling, I'm just telling.
Or Joni? Did Joni Mason do it? Did your wife send a text message from your phone?
This is not a question.
This is a, this is a real question.
This is not a deposition.
Text, text Sergeant.
You have the right to make a public comment without quoting the myth out of...
Call police.
Devin, I'll walk you to your car, let's go. Call 911, Devin.
You're disturbing the meeting now.
You are not a law enforcement officer, we are in law enforcement.
They're not gonna do anything to you.
It's okay, I'll be a law enforcement officer.
I'll ask them to leave.
You are disturbing the peace, I would call point of order and ask you to please remove yourself from chambers.
I need law enforcement to...
This just continues on, is it not part of Robert's Rules that council is not supposed to wear two hats? This is public comment for...
We are regulated by the Pennsylvania Ethics Act.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking, is it not, I, I've read Robert's Rules that...
Well, I, I was speaking, so I'm going to finish, I'm, I'm going to finish speaking, Erica. Okay. The, our financial reports, they don't talk about things where you're not making any money. I don't make any money on anything, in fact, I lose money. You know, we just spent five thousand dollars on two concerts in the park. We, I, I've pledged quite a bit of money to the VFW to build, to build a new building. The Lines Club members that sat on this council never recused themselves. We have, we have a community, I'm part of your community. So, if I put on a concert for you, that's because I like you guys, and because I want everybody to get together. If I help the VFW, it's because I want to help the VFW. I'm not getting any money for it, and I, if I make a motion, we have an entire council here. We had, we had almost a unanimous, I vote, I believe, for, for the land, I, in fact, I'm pretty sure it was a unanimous vote. So, and as far as NCR goes, they're another nonprofit organization, you know, we support nonprofit organizations. We have a lease with the Senior Center for the communities, or, I'm sorry, for the senior, uh, Southern York County seniors at the Community Center. We have, um, work, work hand-in-hand with NCR. So, those are things, and, and the, I'm sure that the solicitor will back me up, that, yes, I recuse myself if there's any doubt whatsoever about financials, but I don't get any money from anybody, none. You know, you can look at my, I'll open my bank accounts up, you can look and see, there's nothing deposited from anybody outside of my pensions and my veterans benefits.
There are very, there are very specific questions on the statement of ethics, those kinds of things, the statement of financial interest.
The instructions are very clear as to what you do have to disclose and not have to disclose. If Mr. Taylor would like to make a complaint to the Ethics Commission, they will investigate, they will review that.
They have.
And they will come out with a finding, one way or another, whether or not there is a finding of some sort of violation of the Ethics Act. So, to the extent, and that's on each one of you as individual council members to determine whether or not you have a conflict of interest or not before you take action on an item under the Ethics Law. So, most, my, and I haven't, I haven't looked at it since I filled mine out. But generally, you do not have to insert or tell folks what nonprofit entities you sit on, because you're not getting remuneration for those positions. So, I, I don't know what he's looking at or what he's not looking at, I don't know, I mean, it sounds like there's some sort of appearance of impropriety in Mr. Taylor's mind. I don't know if that necessarily means the letter of the law that you have to recuse yourself for, for what it's worth.
And I will say, I do recall Dave Reisdorf recusing himself from vote on several occasions, on every occasion that had anything to do with VFW because of being the Canteen Manager at the time. And I give him credit for doing that and bringing that to the attention of the public and to the attention of this council.
For what it's worth, I don't believe he would have to recuse himself as an employee of the VFW.
No, he's getting paid for it.
He's getting paid as any other employee, he doesn't, he doesn't get anything extra, yeah. He's not an owner of principle, his family's not an owner of principle, that's the difference. I mean, the law is very clear on what constitutes conflict of interest.
Did you have something, Erica? Why cut you off, I'm sorry?
No, I was just saying that Robert's Rules is you're not to wear two hats as a council member, public comment is for the citizens, and the council members are not to address during public comment, it's, it's, you're taking two seats, and I'm just...
Yeah, I agree with that.
No, I agree, I agree with that too. I mean, I, I just had, I just had somebody who really has his heart in the right place, I mean, Dave, Dave really is, is, he is distraught over this whole thing. I mean, he's been attacked so many times, and that's why, you know, he, he's just finally, you know, basically, this last speaker got what he wanted, because he wanted him to quit, and that's what he got, so... Well, hopefully Dave will have the opportunity to pull off it.
I think, I think he's, he's so frustrated at this point, because, yeah, I mean, basically, when people sit there and lie about you, you can't, there's no way to, to make it right. I mean, and I don't think it can be made right at this point.
Well, maybe under the circumstances that we've been both through this last several meetings, we need to review the, the idea of, uh, a public comment policy. If this is gonna continue.
We just, it's last month.
We turned it down.
We turned it down.
But that doesn't mean you can't vote on it again.
That is true.
And there may be a possibility that unfortunately, we may have to restrict people to fifteen minutes, or restrict, as the Borough Code, I believe, says, and, um, Jurassic Parliament, this first public...
Yeah, it doesn't really say that.
Is, is supposed to be for items on the agenda. There is a second public comment period later for whatever the heck you want to talk about. So, I'm getting really, I've had enough.
You, you should, you should identify that on your agenda and make that, if that's gonna be the policy, then it's, you know, fair game, you know? Because the sunshine law does say that it's matters of, on the agenda, matters of deliberation, matters of, I forget what the other thing is, and matters of public concern, which quite honestly is a wide open book as to what you can talk about.
Let you do anything.
So, if you want to have two comment periods, the first one can be restricted to items on the agenda, and the second one could be...
We do.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, Erica is right, let's please turn it back over to public comment, I, I apologize.
For what? There's nothing to apologize for.
Any other public comment?
Yes. Some goodness. Some goodness, yes. Let's bring some joy back into this, this whole situation here. I'm Ira, and you guys...
Ira, can you please come up to the desk so we can...
Can I talk now, we are five people.
Yeah, but the camera, the, the speakers are right there, and the camera picks it up, they won't, they won't pick you up.
All right, let me sit down.
You can sit facing, however you want.
That's all right, but anyway, everybody here kinda knows who I am by now. And we are going on year number four with our Gilice Christmas Parade. And, I mean, we can't walk around New Freedom, Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury, anywhere without somebody reminding us of that parade. And it just gives me goosebumps sometimes just to talk about it, because we're just in it for the joy, you know, just making people happy.
I'm sorry, Ira.
Hello, sorry to interrupt.
Want me to take care of it?
Whoever was involved, just give me a gist of kinda what happened, did you step out here or something, or are you gonna talk about it?
Uh, why don't we just do it in public, if you don't mind, you're on camera?
Sounds good.
And I apologize again, but, um, basically, we had someone, uh, speaking, um, made a lot of accusations, um, and he left, and then, I guess, we, we actually had, I'm sorry.
Hold on. One of our Borough Council members, one of our Borough Council members took offense, left the meeting, one of his relatives left the meeting with him before the gentleman who was speaking left. And then a third member of the audience went out to the car as well. And then, when the gentleman was done with his public comment, he went to go out the door, he said there were three people out there who were ha, upset with him and were harassing him and wanted someone to call the police. Yeah, blocking, well, I said harassing, I don't know if you saw it.
But we didn't see any of that.
We could not see anything from here, but that is, that is...
That is what he said, but we did not see any of it, there are no witnesses in this room.
And then Jake, Jake offered to walk him out to his car and help him out, um, so, I don't know what happened there.
I, 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 at the same time, I, it's when I arrived, we split him up, he's out there in his car now, I guess, I saw the story. So, is Taylor allowed back at this, like, this...
Oh, absolutely.
We're after this.
Yeah, he voluntarily left, and we said you can stay, and he decided to leave the room himself.
He stays with me back here every week that you guys have this meeting, so, just give you guys a heads up, I don't know if he's gonna keep getting agitated and saying his remarks, but he's been back here every week, uh, just because, it's, it's, I guess it's feelings or how he feels about stuff, so... I think he's leaving now, so I'll just make sure we're all on the same page, if you guys are good, right?
Oh.
Thank you. Okay, sounds good, if you guys are good, all right.
Thank you.
No problem.
Blah, blah, blah.
Yes.
Sorry.
Sorry. Anyway, the parade this year, it happens to fall on December 7th and we all know what that day is. Yes. So that's our theme this year, Pearl Harbor. Yes. So that's the theme this year. And we're just looking for another joyous, fun parade year. The reception last year was awesome. A lot of people are talking about that as well. I've already gotten calls from people, Starbucks and Chick-fil-A and those type of people saying, hey, when's the parade? And where do we fit in? How can we help? So that, that's, that makes me feel good. Some of the billboards and all that stuff have been ordered. So we're kind of like on track. I think I'm at, we're already at 47 signups. So it just moves from there. I am gonna meet with Gina tomorrow because we kind of wanna, you know, talk to her as well with the rest of the council to see, you know, what else we can do to, you know, bring more joy and everything into the town. It just kind of saddens me at the end of the night, when it's all over. Because it's like, that day starts so joyous and, you know, everybody's happy and then come 10 o'clock at night or whatever, when it's over, it's like, now what? It's all over, like that movie says or whatever.
Then you start planning for the next year.
Then we start planning for the next year. Yes, yes. So, and we, we think, you know, you guys, you know, because you're in our corner, you know, 100%. You know, and we tell everybody when they say anything about it, you know, we let them know, you know, that our Borough Council is on board with us and they support us wholeheartedly. The other thing I wanted to mention is, we kind of came up with another idea for New Freedom. And again, I'm gonna talk to Gina about this one. Is food trucks. I know we mentioned it last year, year before. We talked amongst ourselves and that kind of thing, but I think that, or we think, I'm speaking for my husband as well, that would be a good thing for New Freedom. And I talked to Andy about it last year at the Smoke on the Rail. But, and it seems that, we started it, we started having one a few years back in railroad. But we were competing with Maryland Line on Tuesdays. So you can't really do that with food trucks because they can't be at two places. So, but they have discontinued Maryland Line. They no longer do the food trucks down there. So we figured it would be a great thing to start and to do here in New Freedom, to bring people out and give them varieties, you know, of things, of food and that kind of thing. And a lot of people do food truck Tuesdays, which is good, I guess food truck Tuesdays is okay. But in my opinion, because everything around here on Monday is closed, as far as the food, the restaurants. So I thought that Mondays would be a great day to do it and it'll give people someplace to go since the pisano's, you know, suns, everybody's closed. And then do it on a rotating schedule. We've done this, you can tell we've done this before. And do it on a rotating schedule where there's not the same food trucks all the time. Because people get bored with that. They want something different the next week, the following, you know, whatever. And we don't have to do it every week. It can be first and thirds, second and fourth or something like that, just to get it started, to get it in people's minds. And I just wanted to, you know, bring that up tonight to kind of propose it to you guys and see what you thought about it. If you think that it's a good idea because we can start rallying around all of our food truck friends.
So get this...
Would be a fundraiser for the parade or what?
No, it's no fundraiser at all. Food trucks just come and they just, you know, sell their wares and they just...
Nobody gets a percentage of?
No.
Why wouldn't it go to Rec if you're asking Gina to help?
No, I'm not asking for help. I'm asking if she thinks it's a good idea as part of recreation for this town, to give people something to do. It's not about money.
Well, it's always about money. I can always use the funds.
Yeah, well, not in this case because food trucks, I'm gonna tell you, they're gonna ask the question, am I gonna make any money? Because if I'm not gonna make any money, I'm not coming. That's the way we operate. And if we go to an event and we lose money, that's not good.
It's hard to tell that upfront, right? We don't know how it's gonna go.
That's what you tell them. And that's what we say. We don't know how you're gonna do. But you're taking a chance coming.
Well, we've had that happen several occasions and people say, look, I can't make any money here. I'm, I'm not doing it again.
Right, and that's, that's the way food trucks, that's the way it goes.
The fire company did this several years ago and they just couldn't sustain it. The people, the food trucks said, no, we're not coming back. Shrewsbury also did it. I don't believe they do it any, any longer. Am I right?
I think Shrewsbury still does. The fire company still does food trucks.
They do food trucks?
I mean, I, in personal opinion, I mean, I, I would just assume that if we were gonna do food trucks on, you know, the Borough parking lot or at the community center parking lot, that that would be teamed with the fire company so that, you know, you would have fire company support. You could have the fire company maybe turn out sometimes. But it would be a nice fundraiser for the fire company.
And a lot of, a lot of food truck fundraisers like White Marsh Fire Company, Lutherville, they do do it at the fire companies, you know?
But you're, you're, I, I don't understand. You're saying we go through the effort of helping with this, but they don't give a 10 or 15% rebate back to the, any organizations?
I didn't say anything about helping because when you talk food trucks, everybody's on their own. You know, when we go to, for, for instance, they ask us to come to an event and they say to us, and the first thing I ask them is, well, how many people you, you think will attend? What do you think your track, food truck is gonna look like? They say, I don't know. We can't guarantee you anything. But whatever you do, it's on you. So if you walk away in a loss, you chose to come there.
Helping might just be simple. Give them a place to do that. Say you, right, make a place available, whether it's a playground or someplace else that, you know, depending on how many vendors you have come here, but I mean, that's, that's a help.
I think if you're, if you're not going to partner with the fire company or with Rec, I would suggest, I mean, you can apply, every food truck can apply for a permit. It's relatively low cost. And then they would be on their own, like you said. I don't know why you would involve Borough Council in...
No, I'm not involving Borough Council. I'm just trying to see what you guys think about it.
Just looking for a community...
Because anybody, any food truck can get a penalty for it. You know, go to different towns and get their permit and sell their wares. So, yeah, they can do that.
I mean, if you want to try it, I'd give it a shot and see what happens.
Yeah. And I thought, yeah, with the fire company, yeah. And you're thinking, I don't know about the park because the gravel, the grass, the, you know, whatever. I don't know how that, you know? Whereas the municipal parking lot is just flat ground. Of course, the community center's flat ground, but if that's on a Monday night, I don't know who's using the community center. People may be in there and you can't consume that area with food trucks. Right.
Volleyballs in there Monday night.
Right.
I guess my only question would be is, restaurant industry is pretty regularly Monday night. Mondays are off. And food trucks work a lot of weekends and weekend festivals. Are, are there gonna be available to come on a Monday night? I don't know. I'm just asking the question because it seems like Mondays are universally in the restaurant and bar business, a day that's off. And I know that a lot of food trucks work weekend festivals in different places. So that would be my only thought is, do you're gonna have enough food trucks to come? Or interest?
It, it depends. Because just like us, I mean, yeah, our weekends are pretty, that's, that's, that's how we, we do. And Monday is just like a lot of restaurants, is your downtime and people do their, whatever they need to do. But it's also the slowest day for most of us.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's when they restock or, you know, change out their oil and do all those things for their, you know, if they have grease or fryers or whatever, that may just be the day of the day. Kind of rest and regroup and get ready to go for the next couple of days. That's, I'm just asking that question.
Yeah, they do. Majority of them are out Saturdays and Sunday.
It seems like, it seems like that to me. That's, that's all.
And they're, I might want to take off Mondays too.
Yeah, I think, I mean, this really isn't Borough Council business.
If you want to do it, put it together and go with Andrew and get permits.
Go with blessings, but, you know?
Yeah.
Make sure everybody has a permit.
Fire company, I don't think is gonna get too involved. They have enough trouble right now, you know, getting people for the Saturday.
That they do, that they do their chicken barbecue and all? Yeah.
It, it's tough. It's tough to get volunteers and then you have volunteers, you get a call and they're all going and somebody else, the auxiliary steps in, so.
Okay. We'll, we'll kind of play around with it and see what happens. Okay, you know? All right?
Thanks. Keep us posted on what you end up with.
Okay.
I think it sounds like a great idea for the community.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
I have a quick question.
Oh, go ahead.
Please.
Hi, I've never been to a meeting before. I've lived here for 17 years.
Well, well.
Hello, I'm Jess Sampson. I live in New Freedom. I've lived in the same house for 17 years. I recently was, have been in conversation with my immediate next door neighbors because it's a townhouse community about the state of the, I guess, former farm behind our property. I can look up their address, it's on my phone. And in researching the different, I guess, violations that they've made for the upkeep or management of their property, they've been fined multiple times by the Borough and apparently keep appropriately paying these fines. But our ongoing concern is not just the state of their yard and what have you, but they have a lot of unfenced and kept animals that are now all over our yards and there's lots of animal feces and things on our yards. So my next door neighbor can't let her dog out. My kids can't run out and, you know, play their own stuff and that's on our private property. So I guess my question is, at what point do we go beyond fines when my private property and yards are being impacted by their non-mannered animal?
That's actually a new complaint with the...
I don't think it's a new complaint.
What are we talking about?
I live on 271 North Front Street. I could pause the address.
So 235 North Second?
Yes.
Yes.
What, what type, I'm sorry. What type of animals are you having a problem with?
Um, there's goats and... Yeah.
Well, it's already on the code enforcement, correct?
Yes, and they, the, the, the multiple things is like the 74-7, 74-8, 74-2 violations that they've... This is the one that has the pictures from Google Maps where it's a hot mess. And again, what they do in their yard may not be pretty, but if it doesn't impact my yard, I'm not one to generally be here. But I want my son to be able to play in the backyard and on my property. And I want my neighbor to be able to walk their dog and let their dog out in the backyard of her property. So I guess I was, just to make you guys aware.
So, since a civil complaint's been filed, do these citizens attend this court hearing?
If, if they'd like to, I think they can. But we have, I think Borough hasn't sufficient evidence to present to the magistrate's justice as to the violation.
But this is a different violation. The animals?
Yeah.
Yeah, the animals.
Keeping them animals.
Been a busy week, it's all there.
Pictures nine through 11, I think.
Yeah, they're, they're all on. I mean, if you'd like to come, I don't think you should need more evidence to... I don't...
I'd rather not miss orders.
There's no notification yet.
Okay.
That one, all right.
It just seems to be a long, it's hammering us for a long time without resolution for...
Which is why, well, that's exactly what prompted me to come. Because the problem is they're involved.
Yeah, these folks apparently don't show up. Is that correct, Andy?
They did not respond to the first notice, so that was default judgment. So they, they were basically found guilty of the first two fines So they, they were basically found guilty of the first two fines, other than multiple quality of life citations issued for the property. There are currently three different code violations that are actively being pursued on the property.
I mean, my next door neighbor and I are both, just to put it fully out there, we're both mandated reporters. And so we just have ongoing concerns, because there's a lot of children and all that kind of stuff involved too. And it just, you know, I guess it concerns me as a parent, as a mandated reporter as well.
Children on that property?
Oh, yeah.
And where are those children?
There are two that are in high school. And I think there's at least two, if not three more, that are young. Only one, I think, is elementary age.
Living in that trailer?
Or camper or some. I mean, I remember when I bought this house in two thousand and seven, the gentleman John that lived there, he was lovely. And he had the photo album explaining his stroke and why he was non-verbal. And he was a lovely gentleman. And so it saddened me to find that he had passed. And then the state of his property following, you know, living as his direct neighbor for, I guess, until he passed. I've been there for seventeen years, like I said, and I'm the closest property to that one. I'm way up the end. That's why the, my immediate next door neighbor, two sixty-nine, got me involved. Because it's our yards that are the most impacted, because we're not fenced in.
Under the health department. We can certainly ask children and youth to do a.
Wellness check?
Wellness check.
No, she can, you can.
I can absolutely do that. And I think, I believe my next door neighbor was intending to do that as well. And just, I guess, part of my coming here, but on my and my neighbor's behalf, was to kind of make sure that, you know, we were going by the book of anything. I've not gone down there, I've not spoken to them about it. I've not, you know, made any judgment on, on that stuff. I just, I don't need other animals, feces coming in my house because my kid, my kids can't play in our backyard. And then worrying that as well for the other children, to be honest with you. But I know once you get that ball rolling, that's a very hard thing to stop. So I wouldn't be cognizant of that.
Have they been fined for the nuisance? Or is it just the vehicles and unkept animals and debris? Is this a nuisance side of it that hasn't been approached?
Uh, no, they have been fined for the junk and debris. They have been fined for principal uses and the animals.
Are we doing that under quality of life?
Quality of life?
Well, you, you can't do zoning violations under the quality of life, so.
That's why I asked him. I didn't think.
The principal uses and the animals were under zoning, so they were, they're both civil. As, as was based on, from the magistrate. Preference that the property maintenance ones are filed on a civil basis as well. So, no.
I have a question. I'm sorry, could you do it?
Is there anything that hasn't been filed, that could be filed regarding what you've heard tonight?
By either me or my neighbor.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
Health department.
Within our ordinances, is there anything that she has said tonight that can be filed on that has been?
Well, you could, under the nuisance, you could start a new complaint under that section. Obviously, that would allow the, allow them a period of time to correct the violation. And then you could file again. I don't, I'm not sure that, clearly filing is not getting us anywhere at this point. And the hope is that we eventually get to a hearing situation with the magistrate and. But again, she can fine them, but she can't tell them they have to clean it up. Make them clean it up. That's, that's the problem here is, yes, she can fine them thousands and thousands of dollars, but she can't make them remove the junk.
Is this, is this a time when we should go to district court? As opposed to the magistrate? But it is, the magistrate is district court.
Court of common pleas.
Yeah. And I guess the question is, is you can't, you can't, you can't force someone to do something. You can restrain them from doing something.
Well, there are certain, certain circumstances that it says that we can. We can actually go and perform.
I, I understand that, but I don't think, you, you can't go and take their animals and fence them in and keep them in there. That's what I'm saying.
No, but can, no. Is this a, is this a police matter? Trespass.
Well, that's a trespass. That trespass is a civil matter between them.
Right, so I'm.
Right. You could certainly fence it. You can certainly send in a letter that says you're trespassing, so on and so forth. The difficulty with this is, we can, as Andy said, you can file. The magistrate or justice may look at them and say, how much can you afford? And if they say twenty dollars a week, that's what they have to pay. Or if they say twenty-five dollars a month, they'll usually take that and set up a payment plan. So if we find the bitches out, and they're just paying fines and they're not cleaning anything up. So we can certainly try to take this to the court of common pleas. It'll take six to eight months, and it's telling you that, and it'll cost the borough several thousand dollars to do that. And I'm happy to do that. It's just, that's the process. And Andy's right, we have to give them notice of the zoning violations and the property maintenance code violations. They have time to clean it up. And then they have time to go to the district justice, and then if the district justice finds them guilty, you know, and fine them at that, that level. But we, we have other levels to go to with the Borough Code that we can certainly do. And when, when we. Considering the severity and the children and, I mean, there is another way to go. We could condemn the property. If, if it's deemed, if it's not, if it's not within the building code, yes. If it falls within a definition of dangerous building, or it falls within the definition of an unsafe structure, yes.
Or not suitable for children, because there's so many occupants compared to where there's space and beds.
I understand that, but I, I will tell you that when we sent children and youth to see the place that had all the roaches, they said it's not a problem because they don't bite. But it was a pretty severely bad property that was infested with roaches. So.
True.
I, I wish it were that simple.
Yeah, I know.
But unfortunately, I think that children and youth folks see some pretty bad places. And if it's not eminently dangerous, they don't remove children or threaten their children. So I, while that's a good.
Not what we want.
Well, it's certainly a good way to go to approach that, but I just think the practical reality is they're probably worse places than our kids are in Good County, and they, you know, this one, they don't keep it very well. They don't, they may have, you know, whatever inside or whatever. But unless there's an imminent danger to those kids, they don't typically push that to.
Andrew, have they paid the fines? No. So what, what, can we force a lien on the property?
No, we can't force. It's, it's through the district court. And if, if they set up a payment plan that says five dollars a week on a five hundred dollar fine, they're paying for a hundred weeks.
No, no, I'm talking about through our, our other quality of life that we originally went with.
So they did not pay, we issued all the life tickets. They did not pay those tickets. So what we filed at the magistrate was failure to pay the all the life.
And they were found guilty because they didn't appear?
On the first set.
Okay.
Next one, what, September eighteenth?
Yeah.
I think, I think we're beyond quality of life and need to go into, into zoning at this point, which is a higher fine, which I don't know why we couldn't, what is it, up to a thousand dollars?
You notice, it's five hundred dollars, it's not a thousand. A thousand's under the criminal code.
Right.
So some, some.
I don't know. I just looked at zoning and it's all changed, so.
It's not all.
But it's on your guys' radar, and I appreciate you guys taking care of it.
Yeah, the problem is teeth. I mean, you know, we, we're sitting here and we keep going through the same motions, but there's just no teeth.
So I'm hearing we have ordinances and codes and everything, but they can just continue to do what they're doing and they they don't ever have to remediate.
Or they're pending dates to.
So the citizens.
You have to go to the court of common pleas to try to push that, yes. And unfortunately, the, the, the way the law is set up is that you try to get fines and fine people monetarily to force them, it's cheaper to clean it up than it is to pay the fines.
So they'll pay five dollars a month for the next fifteen years and they'll just continue to do what you, they do, and they'll have to live like this?
Yeah, they may get additional. If it were me, I'd probably put a fence up. I mean, that's, I, I wish I had a better answer for you, but that was.
But I've been in that house for seventeen years.
You know, why should she have to?
Why, I mean, and I.
But that's a civil matter, if you want to keep someone from trespassing.
That's why I said that's a police.
For almost fifteen of them, this is not a problem.
Right?
It's, once that trailer came and all the additional animals came and all these additional people came. It has not been that way for probably close to fifteen of the seventeen years of us being nearby. And I've been in that house much longer than my immediate next door neighbors.
So there's, there's a penalty element here that's out of control of this borough if it goes to court or the magistrate, right? I mean, we've done what we can do as far as trying to, to get the property owner fined. And if the fine's bad enough, like Dave said, you know, it makes more sense to try to clean the mess up than pay the fine. But if it goes to Commonwealth Court, you know, what else? What else can we do? I mean, that's.
We can get an order of court that says you have seventy days to clean this up, and if you don't, we're gonna fine you more. You can't put them in, like, nuisance jail. There's no such thing, right? You can, but you can ask them to put the court. If they don't have.
Put your animals off my property.
But the problem is, is if there's nothing to lose, if they don't have anything to lose.
Then why would they care?
Right. That's kind of unfortunately where it goes. I mean, I've had people who we find, J and K, who does a wonderful job for the fire company, literally pay thousand dollar fines on a regular basis to Frisbee Garden House. Because they want to keep doing what they're doing, and they can afford to do it. So it's, it's a horrible, I don't disagree with you. It's a bad system. But unless you're willing, and if you're willing to spend the money, we can certainly pursue that through the court of common pleas.
I, I.
On behalf of the Borough.
I have a question. Do, are the, these notices are going to the property owner? Are they going to the people who live in the trailer, or are they one in the same? Are they different?
Going to the mailing address, which is two thirty-five North, North Second Street?
They're not going, they're not going to people in specific. So those, I mean, those people may not even be.
The certified mails receipts are being returned to the borough as signed and delivered. And that's the proof that we have for the court.
I'm just wondering if you have a whole nother family living there that just doesn't care. What happens if we continue to go back? Because our, our ordinances and everything say, you know, the first time is X amount, X amount, X amount, then it goes to the district magistrate. Then can we start all over again? Because this has been going on for months and months.
We can cite them.
And then go back to the district magistrate and say, hey, here we are again. This has not been taken care of and file suit again with the district magistrate.
That's what we've done.
Well, I would just keep doing that, and if it doesn't work, how many times have we done that?
This is four times now.
To the district magistrate?
Well, under, under, yeah, it's, four citations have been issued under four different all life tickets that were issued.
I have to ask you this question?
Yes.
Do we know who the people are who are living in the auxiliary structure? Do you know? Do you, is, is it relatives? Is it?
I, so not this past beginning of school year, but the school year before was their first school year entering our district. And the two older children are on the same bus as my children. Because they walk up, and our bus stop is on the corner of North Front and Second. And the first day the mom came up and, being friendly, I introduced myself, welcomed them to the neighborhood, and discussed that my son is in between her two high schoolers ages and what have you. And she had mentioned that the gentleman that I had known was, had been her uncle. I didn't catch her name. My son might know the students' names. But I'm not sure, given the number of people that are newer relatively to the property, I can't imagine that all of them live in the trailer. And not have some people also in the house.
Now, we brought up a, a problem that somebody was gonna look into as, what are they doing with their sewage out of that trailer? We thought, we thought it was maybe tied into the sewer main right there. Did we find anything out?
We did.
Can you say what we found out?
The.
I mean, they gotta be dumping it somewhere.
The, there was no tie-in to our gravity interceptor that runs through the property. The tying is occurring directly into the house. And there's picture documentation of that, and that was sent to the magistrate along with the civil complaint.
So that's a violation also?
For principal uses. That's correct.
I'm sorry, Myra, you had your hand up.
I just had a question. I mean, it seems like you said there's quite a few animals and this kind of thing here. Do we, in zoning and ordinance, how many animals can we have on a property before it's deemed, it seems like a farm to me? You know, you're saying it could be a few, I don't know what they have there, but it, it must be a lot.
Yeah, dude.
What can you have?
Is it residential or is that agricultural? It was a farm originally.
Residential. There, I, you know, rough numbers. I think the property's over an acre. They can have ten, ten chickens, which they have. They also have turkey.
Goat and a turkey.
And multiple turkeys, multiple goats. And again, all that's been documented. And there has been a citation sent to the magistrate for keeping of animals on the property as well.
Isn't there, I don't know in, in New Freedom Borough what the rules are about roosters in our, like, in the area. What their zoning is versus what the townhouse.
They're not allowed roosters, chickens.
Well, there's something that makes noise and sounds awful loud like a rooster. At random times.
I believe there was someone tackled over the trail by one of the turkeys.
Mm-hmm.
Ooh.
I, I think, I think the answer is though, is, one of my associates is going with Andy, because I'm unavailable on the eighteenth, to the hearing. Let's see what the, let's hope they show up. Because that's really have the M D J kind of reading the riot act. Hopefully that scares them into this. If we have several, several of these citations pending, see if we can get a nice fine for that and maybe send that to them, and maybe that scares them into compliance and see if something happens there. If not, then we're gonna have to look at either filing additional citations or decide if the Borough Council wants to take it further with the court of common pleas.
What is that hearing?
September eighteenth.
Could something be noted about the animal issues on the public, the private property behind them?
We don't, we don't have any authority to enforce trespassing on private property. We can enforce that they have chicken, animals that they are not maintaining and keeping pens and so on and so forth and violate some artwork. If you'd like to come and testify, you're more than welcome to come and testify. I'm sure we can put you up there to testify. I don't think we need you to testify because it looks like we have plenty of evidence to establish the violation.
I guess I could just follow up after that. Would that be then reviewed at the next Borough meeting?
The one on the eighteenth is for accumulation of junk and debris, not for animals.
Okay, there you go. So that's when, but you did send that notice on?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
When do they have to comply with?
No, it's already sent to the magistrate.
Okay.
Oh, we, we just.
We talked a hearing.
So the pending hearing date or the most upcoming hearing date is not for animals. The next one would potentially be for that.
Possibly when it's, when magistrate schedules, schedules, yeah.
What happens to them if they don't show up on the eighteenth?
Probably just default judgment and fine.
Which is a vicious cycle, unfortunately.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, my concern and the reason why I was asking a couple of questions is, I, I'm not sure that the property owner is, you know, if I'm living in a house, a trailer, whatever, I mean, I, I would sign for it. I would just.
But if the uncle.
Yeah, if I just live there, I'm not, what's it costing me to live there if I don't have any, um, it sounds like there's a whole nother group that have moved in.
Yeah, if the uncle passed away and there's an estate that owns the property, and these are squatters or family members that are residing there, they may just opt and leave somewhere.
Well, that's possible. And then they may not.
They may have, they may have, they have no financial responsibility for the property.
Right.
Andy, you have a question. Um, should we have this as an agenda in for next month? Because it would potentially involve additional legal fees if we decided to pursue that?
You mean to go to common pleas?
Yeah, what a big, uh, problem, John, right?
Generally, once.
I don't know if that kind of thing is just generally covered with, with, with fees? Or is this like, is this an additional?
It's, it's up to Borough Council as to how they want to proceed. I mean, if you.
Yeah, I understand the decision, but I'm talking about the expense of the funds for pursuing it to that level.
Well, I think if you authorize the solicitor move forward for legal action, it's implied that you'll pay the fees. I don't know that you necessarily have to.
Okay.
You just have to, this is out of the ordinary because generally Borough Council doesn't pursue code violations at the court of common pleas. So I think you would want to do that at this level. Yes.
Would not, would not the court deem that they're responsible, if they've, they're found guilty, that they're responsible for paying?
I have no idea what the, no, that's, that's not the way.
We can ask that?
I, we may, we have to, I don't know.
I thought we can, you can request, because our, I mean, our codes, Borough code says that.
We can ask that, but the.
And then finally, you know, against the property and.
Well.
Why don't we see if they show up the next to magistrate?
I will tell you this. The courts are not quick to enforce legal fees on citizens when the municipality comes after them. It has to be very, very egregious, over and over again. It sounds simple to say that we'll just ask them to pay the legal fees, but I will tell you that it's very rare that the court puts legal fees on two.
In your past experience, what does this take you to the level?
If they're already not paying their funds.
Well, that's, that's the problem is, is they'll cry poor mouth and a lot of the judges will just, they'll say, you're right, clean it up.
I mean, I've only ever seen one adult and a lot of children.
Is there a property, I'll ask you one more question.
Sure.
Is there a property owner on the property at this time?
I've only ever seen the mom of the children. I have not seen, I know that one gentleman has passed. I don't know if his wife is still there. They were the only owners that I have ever known in seventeen years. So I've not seen anyone that I knew from.
That might be worth looking into, because we may be chasing a ghost right now. Tax records, have we checked, tax records?
May I ask a question? If you gave you one, what could this potentially cost us?
Well, you would have to front the money. I mean, it could be several thousand dollars depending on how far it goes and how, how much they want to fight it or if they don't want to fight it. No, the interesting thing is, is.
So we would lien the property for the legal fees? Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Unless the woman that lives there is not the property owner anyway.
Generally, you can't lien for legal fees. You can lien if you give someone a notice to clean up their property and we perform the services. Like, like cutting the grass, cleaning up the property. Those you can, that that's under municipal lien tax claim. All that is not under a nuisance.
So did we get lucky under another lawsuit that I won't mention that was a reverse?
That was, that was a whole different ballgame.
Okay.
And that was extremely egregious, and it was very easy to demonstrate how egregious that was. I don't know that this has gone to that level yet.
Why do we?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move on.
No, I appreciate your time.
It's on our radar.
That's all I ask. Thank you so much.
It bothers us every, every.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I don't think, I think she was just trying to get her.
Okay, any other public comment?
And, and for what it's worth, if the gentleman passed away and it's still in the estate's name, and he has no next of kin, where there's no, and, and they have, he has predators. No one's gonna open that estate because they don't have any money to pay the predators. So they, I, I, there are plenty of instances in municipalities where someone passes away, they have no relatives, they have outstanding debts, so on and so forth. And someone just comes in and lives as long as they possibly can until the bank forecloses on it, takes it back, or the taxes don't get paid. We can sole share itself.
Neighbor, seven years, the estate's never been settled.
Right.
All right, there is a letter from Tasteful Occasions, but I'm gonna put that off until we get to Tasteful Occasions on the agenda. So no other public comment. Next up is approval of minutes from the meeting of August nineteenth. Entertained a motion? Sorry?
That comes after the minutes. It's after the, later I don't know when this letter comes.
Because we need to talk about Tasteful Occasions, Lee, so I was just putting it off.
Well, it's five B.
Yeah, it's not up next.
I think you just said later on the agenda.
Well, yeah, I mean, I, I was just. Yeah, I mean, if you, if you want, I mean.
No. The minute should be next.
I thought maybe you had a separate note on it, on.
Yeah.
Oh, no, they just sent, they sent a letter to be read. So I'm, normally that would be done under public comment, but like you said, let's do that. I'm sorry. I thought you had it in your packet.
Well, we do.
We do.
We're just following the agenda. Minutes are next.
Okay. All right, I would entertain a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the council minutes from August nineteenth, twenty twenty-four?
On second. Motion is second. Discussion, corrections?
I would just like to add under the rec report that I had asked about the shed at the community center and requested that she was very township pay for a portion of it that was omitted. for a portion of it that was omitted, that was, so.
Are you making a motion that that be?
Are you asking that that be added?
Yeah, I, we spoke about that, I requested it.
So under rec report?
Mm-hmm, that's what I asked about it, talked about it.
Do you have words or?
It wasn't, it wasn't a motion, I don't know what to do with it. Why just put Erica asked S Y C rec to pay for part of the shed?
Well, I inquired what the shed was in the part of the community center and asked that, you know, due to the rec, what do you call it, joining of the township, that they paid for a portion of, that being it's gonna house rec items in there, and that was denied. That was it.
Was a motion made? Did you?
No, couldn't even make a motion, because it was just, it's like, not gonna do that.
Well, it's not per the intergovernmental agreement. Again, I don't know what to do with it.
You would just like it to be noted in the minutes?
Yeah, just noted, I mean, I saw it, just noted.
I think that's all Erica's asking, is it be noted in the minutes that she's requested that Shrewsbury Township paid for a part of the shed? That request was.
Right, okay.
Not acted upon, or whatever.
Does that work?
I'm just waiting to see if there was a motion and a second, so.
You would have to modify your.
I'm not gonna modify the motion.
Any other discussion? There is a second, or an ill second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
My vote is aye. Okay, approval of treasurer's report pending audit?
Make a motion for the approval of treasurer's report, August twenty twenty-four, pending audit?
Second.
Discussion, questions? All in favor?
I have a question, for the rec programs, for the revenues, should that be in there? Part of these programs that have been running by rec, shouldn't they?
That's shown under the recreation commission now, which is separate reporting to any. The recreation fund revenues that you see relate to the account that's holding the capital improvement fund.
Where is the one you're speaking of?
Borough council doesn't approve the regional recreation, that's ordered regional recreation to approve their financial report.
Shouldn't we see what the rec is bringing in, the revenues?
Not under New Freedom Borough's treasurer's report, no.
Didn't New Freedom give the rec, the new rec council money?
For what? What, we can give them money?
Operating funds. I thought that in the original bylaws or the original agreement, that we split, each put in our rec fees.
Right, that they have their own budget.
But we did give them rec fees, our rec fees.
We did not give them any rec fees, no, that was made clear through this whole process. Any recreation fees that were for land development or subdivision activities are being held and maintained by New Freedom Borough. All that money is shown in your treasurer's report under the recreation capital improvement line item on the cash flow report. So any money that was generated by New Freedom Recreation and the money that's received for subdivision land development activities is held by New Freedom Borough. Southern York County Regional Recreation Commission is its own entity and operated under its own budget.
Brian, can you, um, just ask them if they can copy us on their, um, report, whenever, whenever they start making them?
Absolutely.
That could just be included in your report.
And the only other question was, Smoke on the Rail Special Events, four thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and forty cents for taste vacations? What, what do they, what was that expense?
They, they ordered, because they're obviously ordering food on a, uh, every week basis, uh, they were able to order all the People's Choice Wings for us, the People's Choice Pork, as well as the steaks that are required for the Steak Cookout Association competition, which was Friday night.
So you ordered all the food for them?
Uh, ordered the raw product.
Wow.
Yeah.
And who cooked all that? I thought people came and did their own barbecue.
They do, so the People's Choice events are where the contest hands out meat, the competitors prepare the meat, and then we serve to the public. And they get to vote for their favorite samples of wings on Friday night, uh, they get to vote for their favorite samples of pork on Saturday.
You got that at a better price than Zobbles?
Yeah, yeah, we're not through, yeah.
And I'm assuming that, uh, you're still working on things, that we don't have profit and loss?
Yeah, we're, um, we're waiting on, um, some refunds from Brewed Products, a bunch of refunds for things that we returned to Amazon, so just waiting for all those things to clear to, to.
That takes a while.
Yeah. And we just received, and, and we knew it was coming, but for Cleveland Brothers for the generator rental. So things take a little bit to get through the process.
Questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye. Okay, Stormwater Channel on North Constitution?
Yeah, so following last month's meeting, uh, we did reach out to quite a few contractors in order to obtain pricing. It took a little bit, but we were able to receive three quotes as required. We received, the lowest quote was from H and H General Excavating in the amount of sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So we did, uh, just execute that contract today, based on council's pre-authorization at last month's meeting. They are planning to begin work, uh, actually next week, uh, the week of September sixteenth. We have notified, uh, P A D E P and the R and D Corps Engineers that the work's going to begin. I was in contact with the Hitty property today, because we're gonna need a temporary construction easement. Mrs. Russell, I don't think we're gonna need a contemporary construction easement for you, based on the plans, but, um, everything will work on the Hitty property and, and the Berchantine property. But that week, or that work is to start next week, and just a reminder that that work has to be cleaned up and stabilized by October first. So, a little bit of a tight timeframe here, but I think it's finally getting done.
So, true.
Yeah, it's October first, and transpondency, yeah.
In, in North, that type of here, what was the high bid?
Uh, it was, the high bid was twenty-six thousand.
Okay.
We received another bid of twenty-one thousand, so.
I would think that, um, the fact that Sam is willing to let you use her property to get to the problem would should have helped with this estimate, did it not?
Well, yeah, so the way the plan was drawn, um, through one of the revisions with D E P, was that there had to be a rock construction entrance, so we had to work through that, uh, to be able to get, get access in. And I spoke with her today, I know she has a couple of things to move out of the way, uh, before they're able to, to lay that rock construction entrance down, and get to the back of the property.
Now, is that gonna be a permanent easement to the property?
It's a temporary construction easement.
So if this happens again, we have to go through this all over, or it should, it should happen again?
There is a twenty-foot wide stream protection easement as part of the land development plan. Already on the property, but this would be a, already on the Berchantine property, not on the Hitty property or Russell property.
Questions? Okay, Tasteful Occasions lease renewal, uh, we received, um, a letter, I guess everyone's had a chance to read it. They asked that be read, I didn't say it out loud.
Is there a reason that they are not here to present this? I mean, you would think that they would, all we're doing is reading the letter, I, I would think that we could do a back and forth here if they were that concerned.
Yeah.
I received a text, um, earlier today that they are not able to attend due to some sickness in the family.
Council did vote on this last month, being asked unanimously. Multiple inaccuracies were stated in this letter. Count five, possibly six, out of the seven statements they made. As I stated last meeting, there's no fluff here. Several things were not even increased. That.
I'm gonna ask, does anyone want to make a motion that we make a counter, or? I mean, we're, we're looking, just a statement, we're looking at seventeen, over seventeen thousand dollars in profit from the lease, if, if they go away, it goes away, and we're already in a hole on the community center. So is anyone interested in making a motion for a counter offer back to them?
It's nothing, I don't quite understand these counter offers, when you go to rent, lease something, you don't go in and say, well, you know, I really don't want to pay that, I'm gonna pay this. This is for what they use, again, there's nothing added to the electric appliances, I mean, that is what it is.
The, the act, all right, um, if I may, commercial lease negotiations are all about back and forth.
Right.
Since there is an offer, there's a counter offer, typically there's two or more other rounds of counter offers, so as a general, and I'm not saying you guys have to have to do that, but as a general rule, commercial lease negotiations, there's a ton of back and forth on these things.
If you continue to do that, then they are not paying for their usage of it, and you're reaching into the general fund for somebody else to cover the usage, that's what I'm saying.
I wasn't making a statement about what, whether or not it should be backed up by the borough or not, I'm just saying, I just don't have a commercial back and forth.
But it's not, it's not being, um, all right, let's do it this way. I will make a motion that we entertain a counter offer for the Tasteful Occasions lease.
Of what?
Of what we have on paper, or?
I have, I have some stuff that I've prepared, and I'm just trying to get to a point where we could talk about it. Uh, we certainly at the end can say, no, we don't want to do it, or you can say, you want to do some part of it, but I think that we at least need to talk about it, because I don't want to see, I mean, obviously, if they go away, there's seventeen thousand dollars that the borough has to cover out of general fund, because that's the profit on this lease.
There is, but that space will then be able to be rented as well, so it's not.
Not lining up to rent it.
It's never been put out there.
Yeah.
You know, so I'm just saying that this, this letter was very, uh, strong-arming, very accusatory. It was.
I will, I will agree, I think, particularly like the tone of the letter.
That they are threatening, that, that was a threatening letter, absolutely threatened, this council.
I don't know what in the world their donations to Women's and Children's Center has to do with negotiating a lease.
Well, they went very, they tried, I mean, they, they brought, they brought, they hit it, you know, broad, um, broad spectrum kind of a thing, so.
So, I'll, I'll second Andy's motion, so we can, we can talk about it, because right now we're talking about stuff we don't even have a second on it, so.
Well, you didn't make a motion.
What's the full motion?
I did, the motion is to consider a counter. And I'm, and if, if council will indulge me, I'm going to talk for a minute or two. Can you pass it that along now?
Oh, I thought that was so vague.
No, it's not that bad.
I had a motion.
I'm sorry, I made the motion, and then he said.
So you have to have a vote.
I'm sorry?
You have to have a vote.
Yeah, that's a discussion, that's exactly how Robert's laws works.
That's a good.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion is.
This is a, this is a discussion, and then we, and then we can, and then we can.
I'll call it.
Okay. Briefly, if you look in the Wall Street Journal, um, the prop, commercial property is expected to go up like by two percent. Uh, this lease was, um, like a thirty-six percent increase overall. Uh, I think it's incumbent on any landlord or any borough to at least try to make some considerations for, for their tenants. So what I did was, I took the amount of the lease from last time, and I increased that by ten percent, plus I added a twenty square foot in. So that comes up to fourteen oh four. One ninety-three for gas is the same. Electric, we used, the, the calculation that you used, I, I understand it, but the calculation was not quite right, because what happens is, when a freezer or a refrigerator runs, the wattage on the refrigerator isn't the wattage that's actually used, it's just the peak wattage. So whenever a refrigerator or freezer is running, it's about thirty percent of what the wattage rate, rating is shown. And on the second page of this little thing says, the average refrigerator has a standard wattage of three hundred to eight hundred, and we use seven fifty or seven eighty, but a refrigerator with a standard wattage of, say, four twenty will only have a running wattage of a hundred and forty, because the compressor doesn't run all day and all night. It only runs to get you back down to the temperature you want, and then it stops. So there's an idle or standby of zero to fifty watts, a startup of a hundred and fifty to two hundred, but active cooling is only sixty to one hundred. So if you look at that, um, you're basically looking at, um, just a couple of cents a day to run.
These are not average refrigerators.
Sorry?
These are not average refrigerators.
Say that one more time.
These are not average refrigerators.
No, they're not, but they're, but they're still, but they still work the same way a refrigerator works, they, whenever these people go home.
Here's the wattage calculator right here that I put in, and these.
But you use twenty-four hours a day.
They are.
They run twenty-four hours a day?
They don't run twenty-four hours a day, it's just like any other refrigerator, they shut, they, the compressor shuts off, a fan circulates, which a fan uses basically nothing, and then whenever it needs to kick back on, it might kick on at three in the morning, or, it's just like the refrigerator runs at home, it's not any different, it's just a compressor. So, you know, these, these yellow sheets show you an energy guideline, you could see that the, uh, wattage on the refrigerator is, I think, oh, I don't have it on this one, but I think it's like, uh, six hundred watts, but the actual yearly use of it is only eighty-five dollars, and that's at twelve cents, and our kilowatt, kilowatt, uh, per hour is, uh, seven point eight five five cents.
These are seven hundred and eighty watts.
And multiply, it's, it's still, it's the same, it's the same as, this is, I mean, this is how it works, this is why we used last year, or the first lease, we used like fifty. This is why we used, last year, or the first lease, we used like $15 a month for each refrigerator. It's not, it's, the refrigerators are not $1,000 a year to run.
They are open and closed multiple times every day, all the, all day.
And I will...
At night.
Well, no, they're not there all night.
They're there, they're there at night. Sometimes they're there till 9:00, 9:30, 10 o'clock.
Okay, and then the rest of the night, they're running at 30%. That's the point. I think that, I think it's high on the electric. We could look into that further, but that's what the books say. Last lease, we included the water, we included the trash. I mean, that dumpster's gonna sit there whether Tasteful Occasions is there or not.
Is it?
Do we need to?
It's recycling and trash.
It's recycling.
Talk about that last one.
Yeah, it's for the, I mean, you're gonna need it if you run out to the community center.
There's a smaller one that we can use there to bulk the recycling.
Well, the point is, is it's just included in the contract. There's no specific cost.
And that, yes, that is included in the contract, and all the citizens of New Freedom have that contract divvied up to them. And in the Borough Minutes, I found where businesses are to pay one and a half times the fee for trash pickup. So if a resident is $90 a quarter...
You're saying businesses like 7 or...
Yes. One and a half times.
But again, the trash receptacle is going to be there whether or not they're there or not. That's, that's the only point. And there is no separate water.
And that is divvied up to the residents. It's not a free, there is a cost to them being there that is worked into the contract. There might not be a bill going there, but it's worked into the contract.
I agree 100%, but if you, I think if you go in, and this is, again, this is just my opinion. I mean, you know, you guys do what you want to do, but, and, but your hearts. But the point, the point of the matter is, is if we go in at a 36% increase, I'm not sure we're gonna have 17,000 dollars in our budget from Tasteful Occasions.
I don't know where they're gonna go to get a deal like this. They've gotten a sweet deal for so many years that now we're finally bringing them up to what it should have been before they got all the failures.
But again, and I, and I agree with you, 1,000%. I agree with you that this lease needs to keep climbing. I don't, and, and it's going up under this by 14%, not 36%. And the reason that you do that is any property manager will tell you that you don't hit people bang with a big increase. You bring it up to market level. And again, I have no idea what market level is. Nobody, nobody can tell you what market level is for a commercial kitchen in New Freedom, Pennsylvania. But this, this brings it up 14%. In two years, we bring it up another 14%, and I think we should write it right into the lease. It's gonna go up.
Back to the trash.
That's my opinion.
Well, and I, and I, and they were highly inaccurate. Their last lease did not go up 200%. It went up 141 because it was so woefully under.
I don't disagree with you.
I don't anticipate any future large increases. I think this is where the ballpark is to not have to be dipping into their use for their use of the community center that they do use. I will say, looking at that, in, in the Borough Minutes, businesses pay one and a half times the annual rate for trash pickup, unquote. So that, that would be $45 a month instead of 90. So that is something, a savings that could be done right there.
And we're not charging, we're really not charging any businesses that rate, which we should be in, correct?
We don't charge anybody. Do you know where, where did that come from?
The official Borough Minutes.
This is a residential, residential contract.
February of 98.
So businesses are not dumping their, putting their trash out for Penn Waste to pick up on Fridays?
There might be Penn Waste pickups. I would have to look. There, there were a couple, a few that had maybe some mixed-use places. But as far as commercial establishments, be it a restaurant or something...
I was, I mean, I was just shocked to hear, to see that.
Well, that's not in the current contract. That's...
They're exempt from our mandatory trash pickup.
It's a residential refuse collection contract. You will have, you might have to...
Well, what they charge us and what we charge them are two different things. If they, they could charge us, say, $100 a week, we could charge 110. We don't have to charge the amount that Penn Waste charges, am I right? I mean, it could be wrong, but, am I right?
I think, from what I understand, Erica's point is that the taxpayers of New Freedom are paying for that dumpster to sit at the community center.
Absolutely.
Correct.
That's the point she's making.
It's included in the contract, but yes, they're, obviously, they're...
So you can certainly determine something as a part of building this lease rate to recapture that, that the taxpayers are covering on behalf of Tasteful Occasions, if I'm hearing you correctly.
Absolutely, and I think setting the precedent of the official Borough Minutes, businesses pay one and a half times the annual rate. That would be $45 a month. The committee had said $90 a month. So I would say we could go down to $45 a month on the trash pickup. That would be fair.
If they pay one and a half times, why would it be...
Well, it would be, because it's 540 a year. Residents pay 360, right?
$9 a quarter, $30 a month.
And then wouldn't a business one and a half times be 540 a year?
360 is 540.
540 a year.
If it's $30 a month, then, then one and a half would be 45, right?
Divided out.
One and a half times 540, okay. So it should be 30, it should have been, what you're saying is it should have been 30, and it would have went to 45.
No. I'd say that the committee, when we met before, I found this information. Before I did, I just stumbled across it. The committee had said, you know, they put out a lot of trash. You know, their catering business put out a lot. The committee had said $90 a month, you know? So I'm saying that in finding what's in the official Borough Minutes, it says one and a half times. I would be good with $45 a month for trash pickup.
I'm not aware that we build any business...
Not that, well...
Again, I don't think, there might be some strikers, but the majority, it's a, it's a residential contract. We're not building businesses under the refuse contract.
I think it's an old thing that nobody currently caught.
When, yeah, when's that from?
This is February 9th of 98 Borough Minutes. Well, there was a standard that it was captured...
Under that contract.
But ordinance says so.
Under, it could be under any contract. It just depends on the amount of the contract. My point is, there is, it's baked in the cake. Those dumpsters there cost a service. They're not going there for free. It's in this whole big pie that's been divvied up to all the citizens. Why should not they pay for their business pickup a portion of that whole big pie?
I'm not arguing that. I just don't understand the logic of looking 26 years ago when there's...
And I didn't look to find that. I just came across it.
Again, I understand that. I just, I'm not sure I understand the logic behind it. I understand...
The precedent by a prior council?
I understand including that into their lease agreement. I just don't understand the logic behind, of referencing that point.
Because there was no reference point outside of that, that I could get outside of the committee coming up with 90.
Is that the ordinance, or is it a...
It was action that the council took.
I think it was a carryover from the day when the borough built for trash. And then when the borough went to Penn Waste doing all the building, it took out...
We still, we still...
We still built for trash.
Yeah, it's carried, but the commercial, the commercial portion, that might lay. So probably, but in fairness to Penn Waste, had they built, had we asked for commercial collection, the rate wouldn't be what it is today either. It would be a different rate for all the taxpayers, for everybody, so...
Well, let's, let's take this one. What, what do we pay for those two dumpsters?
We don't pay anything.
That's a part of our contract.
It's baked in the whole $800,000, five-year plum trash.
Okay, I think, I think, that's fine. Let's use $45. I have, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, you know, we have to put something, you know, we're using the actual for the hood, $45. We got $94 in the appreciation fund.
The water. It was $50 last lease for water usage. The committee said 100, you know? There is a lot of water usage coming in there, whether that community center gets built, it has a meter, it doesn't.
I don't think we had water use, and I think that was just included.
Absolutely. Oh, no, you had it. Water usage, $50.
Okay.
There's a, there's a cost for the, the water. There's a cost for the chemicals. There's a cost for it being treated through the plant. There's a cost for the sludge removal. There's a cost. It was 50, you know? Maybe we can look at somewhere between 50 and 100. But there is a cost, and they were charged for water previously. We all get, I feel, to our home.
For what it's worth, I think their point is, is no one else in the building has to pay for it. Why aren't we being asked to pay for it? And I think the answer to that question is probably because you're a for-profit business and everyone else is a part of the community. But that's up to you guys to answer. I, I think that's the answer.
That's untrue because in the senior center lease, it's stated in the meeting that it's the, the base rent, utilities, and so forth. So it's, that was another not correct thing.
And again, I, I think you'd be better off kind of coming up with what you want to collect for rent and just say it's all in, right? It's, your, your rent rate is X.
Yeah, but we, we, well, we did that. But we're going, we're going, we have to put that rate together. And what, what she's saying is that should be added in.
You know, is $75? You know, better? For water usage?
I don't know, there's no meter, so it's hard to...
How hard would it be to put some type of a singular meter? I can put a regular, just to double-check your meters, I can put along the line. You know, it's a flow meter. Is that something we could do?
It's not separately, it's not separate on the pipe, right? It's all together.
Yeah, it's all together.
But you have to keep in mind, this is a commercial kitchen. There's definitely water usage.
There's separate pipes that go up into that kitchen, am I right?
There are, but you have hot water, you have cold water. Which then, how do you differentiate who's using the hot water and...
Well, that was the other question we had. Where's the hot water coming from? Is there a tank?
Tankless.
It's tankless.
That heat pumps.
So that's electric right there that we didn't even take into consideration.
It's gas.
Oh, they're gas? So there's, that's gas all year round.
That's why, that's why the committee used...
Well, we'll get to gas when we get to gas. Let's stay on water.
But somebody fires on me. I just want, I just want to try to modulate the lease a little bit. And if we go back next year and we make it 100, that's fine. I'm just trying to make something that's palatable and acceptable to both the borough and the tenant so that we don't lose the profit part, portion of it.
The other difficult thing about a commercial lease is typically in a situation like this, there'd be a separate gas meter, there'd be a separate electric meter, and a separate water meter. So you don't have to fight this fight. And then the other costs, like sewer, you would split it based on percentage of square foot.
Water, by basing on water?
Yeah, well, you could do that too, yeah, if you wanted to.
Yeah.
Right. There's some of us do it by percentage on can.
How hard would it be to put meters on what they use? Like, I know it's an old building, things are broken up, it's, it's messed up.
You don't want to do that, right?
No.
No, that is...
I have a question on the trash. If they're gonna be paying one and a half times, are they then gonna be upset when people rent it and put the stuff in the trash can, in the dumpster that they're paying for?
Believe me, they, they put a lot more in there than anybody else.
I'm not saying the amount.
That's like 11 ounces of my house because I have construction projects.
If I'm paying the full price for it, then I don't think I want other people using it.
I'm not sure they're paying the full price at...
I don't know that we've ever had the problem where, like Glenrock, people were dumping couches and everything else in there.
We had, we had the problem over at Veterans Park, but...
But I'm sorry, I'm tearing that up.
Why don't you just make them get their own dumpster, like every other commercial business?
Why should they when they can throw it in there at 2:00 in the morning for...
I'm asking the question, just say, "You're not allowed to use our dumpster. Get your own dumpster because every other business in town gets it." And just eliminate that problem from your lease. Because they have to get it and maintain it.
Well, they'd have to get two.
Well, then they have to get two, but that's, every other business in town has to get two. I mean, if you want to treat them like a business, treat them like a business, you know? If not...
That was my question. Like, if I, if they're gonna be charged $45 a month, and why would they want anybody else putting trash in their dumpster that they're paying for?
I'll bet it would go up a lot more than what we've got here. $90 a month.
But that's not our problem because it's not in our lease.
No, you're saying, well, it is in our lease if we take it, put it in our lease at $90 a month.
And my point is, is if you take it out, you take out $90 a month for trash, they have to worry about getting trash...
And I just said, it's gonna cost them a lot more than $90 a month.
But you're missing my point. It's not a part of our lease.
It's basically, we actually have a...
It's ours.
This is a bargain.
They don't think so.
Well, I'll bet some way over there doesn't think that they should be paying what they are either.
I think it's fair.
Yeah, I think it's fair. Okay, so what else do we got? Do we under, what do we want to do about the base rate?
That stayed the same. That was an increase.
That was based on the square footage, correct?
Yeah, that stayed the same.
So you want to just leave it at $8?
Well, you know, the citizens of New Freedom had a 25% tax increase. You know, there are mortgages over four years for those who carried mortgages. Did their mortgages go up at all? Yeah, taxes got raised, they had escrows, their mortgages went up. Here, we're saying we're not gonna raise the base rent on you. I think that's very fair to leave that.
Well, we are raising the base rent. We're raising it to, at, making it 10%. We're increasing it by 10% plus adding 20 square feet.
Well, you only charged them for 1,900 square feet. You did not charge them for the 360 square foot room that was built for them to use for storage. And you did not charge them for Room 106 that they were supposed to vacate, that they never did, that they're still using. So it was $8 per square foot per year. Their, their rent was 1,266. And their true usage is 2,280 square feet at the $8. That's where that comes to.
Yeah, I understand.
So that should have, that square footage should have been in their last lease. They got to use that for free. Again, I don't understand how they're being treated unfairly. They've gotten perks, more than perks.
Can I ask a question? When you presented, when this was presented to them, did you point, was there that kind of information provided to say, "You picked up the 360 square feet and so on and so forth"?
It was breakdown of everything that we discussed or...
And maybe that's what you reiterate as a part of the response to this, is this is the information...
The 360 square feet was added.
$8,000 came out of that general fund to fill that, to build that storage space for them. They were never charged for that. One, to build it, and two, the use of it for the last two years at the end of this year.
Yeah, I think we need to tell them the 360 square feet. And I think we need to mention also that electric went up for the borough by 46%.
Percentages were deceiving.
Well, it is, it is 46%.
Another thing, they're using nine appliances now. They were only using seven before. They're using more electricity. They are using the most dense section of that community center, drawing on the electricity more than any other section of that community center. And they're not being asked to pay, I think, a 60-something percent. It was outrageous.
Where are you going?
I was looking for my notes. In the average electric bill, it's ten fifty-five. They had, they quoted that incorrectly. It was twelve thousand six seventy for last year.
Did you take a whole year, I thought you mentioned it the last, the last several months, like through the summer?
That was for the gas. That was to pick out the gas because then again, we're not even charging them for heating it through the winter. You know how that thing runs wonky? They're, they're not assessed a fee for that, but we'll get to gas. The electric, uh, for the appliances, that electric is seventy-five dollars because what wasn't accounted in there is dishwasher, coffee pot, toaster, toaster oven, heat pump, the light usage and all the sections of the, you know, those sorts of things. Seventy-five dollars, the, the committee said, you know, um, would be a, a fee for that. Is there another number other than seventy-five for those, um, light usage, heat pump, coffee pot, dishwasher, those sorts of things that council would like to entertain?
No, in fact, I took and I used the forty-six percent and it said, it's, it comes up to seventy-three dollars, which is pretty close to the seventy-five. It actually went up on the, on the walk-in. The walk-in is one seventy-four, not one thirty-two.
I had, well, according to the specs here, it was one thirty-two.
One nineteen?
Okay.
Because in, in the, when you, when you did this, the last lease, um, made the comment that, you know, you don't, no, no, here it is. It's a guesstimate, so you were guesstimating the last lease for all of these seven appliances, which now it's nine appliances. You weren't far off on the, on the walk-in. That was close, but.
Well, I used the same, the same textbook to do the other, the other appliances too. That's why I'm thinking that the, because you do, I mean, it's, it's thirty percent, it's actually a third for startup and. I don't know, it's not going to make that big of a difference, but either way, it's fine.
They use the upstairs, um, you know, that kitchen upstairs, that's like a kitchen in any one of our homes.
Yeah.
It's not being used full-time, it's being used a couple hours a day, meals on wheels. You know, there's not extraneous usage coming out of that. The most highest usage of electric is coming from those nine appliances as well as, you know, their overall usage of the center. And again, they use. Where is it here? They said that they occupied twelve percent of the building. They do not. They occupy twenty-four percent of the building.
Yeah, I'm not worried about their luck.
Well, there's just a lot of not correct information in there, but they do use, um.
All right, well, I haven't heard any other discussion, so I'm saying, what I'm hearing is then we're okay with the base rent at fifteen twenty. The gas is one ninety-three.
And what we did for the gas, we took the.
I liked what you did with that.
The, the months where nothing's being used.
June, July and August, we had.
Yeah, uh, no, um.
Yeah, June, July and August.
Think it was. Three months during the summer.
Yeah, three months during the summer.
July, August and September, that, it was five eighty, we divided that by three, one ninety-three a month. Two hundred and seventy-two dollars was used for the previous lease. So we're not even putting in because we kind of thought they're generating heat in the winter, cooking and the ovens and all of that. So we didn't add anything to the base gas uses and then gas uses in July, August, September. That's them.
All right, so we have forty-five for the trash, sixty-two for the hood, ninety-four for depreciation, uh, seventy-five for water, seventy-five for electric. Uh, the only thing is the center electrics. Do you want to change those to match the, the, what they talked about for the change in, um, usage from? It's really not seven eighty and the fact that it's a quarter, a third of that or, or not?
But their, their wattage is seven eighty, that's.
It is seven eighty, but it's not, it's not, yes, if you calculate it and it's on twenty-four hours a day, but the compressor is not running twenty-four hours a day, it's about a third.
So what are you saying, I'm kind of lost in here, what are you saying the electric should be?
Uh, four freezers would be eighty-eight, uh, the half freezer would be eleven, the three refrigerators would be fifty-eight. And the walk-in, I came out higher than you did, but I would just leave it at the one thirty-two.
And what's your total?
I don't know, I didn't add it up.
Do you have the same number of refrigerators that we have?
Well, you have a half refrigerator. I have.
No, I thought she said we, we had nine.
She said nine appliances.
Oh, nine appliances.
So it's eighty-eight, eleven, fifty-eight and one thirty-two. Eighty-eight, eleven, fifty-eight, one thirty-two. Two eighty-nine.
That is, that is way off from four sixty-two.
Well, it is, but the reason you have four sixty-two is you're counting it as if the compressor's running twenty-four seven and they don't. That's not how refrigerators work.
No, they, they don't, but.
Can I, can I just add it this quick? I didn't want to interrupt you. So if, if I just went through everything you proposed and added it up, I come up with two thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Okay.
We get two thousand, it's sixty.
There's pretty much a split between the twenty-five ninety-six and the twenty-one fifty-seven.
I'm just trying to get to a point where we have an agreeable lease. I'm not disagreeing with anything you're saying, Erica. I agree with you that they should be at the numbers, well, the only thing I disagree with is the electric for the refrigerators and the freezers.
Andrew, can you give me the price on each one?
Yeah, so on the base rent, I added the, the fifteen twenty. Um, on the gas, I did one ninety-three. And then I came over on electric and did eighty-eight dollars, eleven dollars, eight dollars. And then there was a statement made about going back to the, the one thirty-two for the walk-in. So I kind of jumped around there a little bit.
I think that's right.
Um, and then I went down through the left column there for the twenty twenty-four lease, did seventy-five for electric other, seventy-five for water and sewer, ninety-four for the depreciation, sixty-two for the hood, and I think you said forty-five for the trash.
What did the electric come out to?
Uh, separately, well, I, I just added that together. I can get you that. Uh, two eighty-nine.
Oh, it's. Plus, plus the seventy-five for the electric other, I didn't add that in. So it's three sixty-four, too.
I don't know, that's just a, I hear what you're saying, but they are plugged in, they are used a lot, they're open, they're closed, they're open, they're closed.
But not when they're not there. That's the whole, the whole.
But they have twenty-four seven access to three sixty-five. I would be more comfortable with a even three hundred coming off that four sixty-two for the electric slash appliances.
An even three hundred of what?
Um, the two eighty-nine. Electric slash appliances.
It's a three sixty because we didn't add in the seventy-five.
Oh, three sixty.
Well, yeah, well, I kept them separate, keeping them separate.
It doesn't really matter, we're just.
Well, I'm just, when I'm working, working the numbers here, the two eighty, you said it was two eighty-nine on here.
Two eighty, two eight, whoops, was it two eighty-nine? Yeah, two eighty-nine.
Two eighty-nine.
That's for the fridges and the walk-in.
Yeah, the fridges.
Electric others and additional seventy-five.
Keeping that separate because of what we have, just talking the appliances, the two eighty-nine, um, you know, four sixty-two. That's a hundred and seventy-three off, that's, you know, and these here, these specs, these are for brand new appliances, more efficient than what is over there. I'd be more comfortable with, instead of two eighty-nine for the electric slash nine appliances, it was the three hundred.
Oh, yes, that's a.
That's what I meant. Three hundred?
Yeah, and I think that's probably.
And electric others, seventy-five.
Add another eleven dollars or something.
Fifteen, twenty, one ninety-three, three hundred, seventy-five, seventy-five, ninety-four, sixty-two, forty-five.
Get your toe.
Twenty-three, sixty-four.
Best and final.
Six, minus.
So how much you figured in for the petting here in relations commission? To be defended.
Oh, you're such a fucker.
That's what he's suggesting, I mean, that is what he's suggesting.
Yeah, that was absolutely unnecessary for him to say that.
It costs him nothing to file petting relations complaint. It's going to cost you guys something to defend it.
I think, I think it's BS.
Okay, I don't really, I don't think we really should be discussing that right here, so I think we should move on to coming up with a final number that we're going to propose. Is that the final number, twenty-three sixty-four?
So what percent decrease is that for what was?
Twenty-five ninety-six, we're going down to twenty-three sixty-four.
And again.
Four, five, it's two hundred and thirty dollars roughly.
This is, the base rent stayed the same, the gas going down. The replacement, the same?
I, we, we already know all that, but I, I think the important thing is, is twenty-three sixty-four minus the nineteen hundred. What they're going to be looking at is to the twenty-four point four percent increase. And if that's what everyone's happy with, that's, that I have no problem.
And again, I do not foresee any large increases outside of maybe different usage of the community center when this lease is up.
But you can't really, I don't think we really should say that because you don't know what gas is going to do.
I, I don't know, that's why I said, I don't know, but outside of any crazy usage that would be at the end of these years. I, I think this is close to what they are using. And I think it would, um, I think it's, I think it's fair, they're not being over, they're not being overcharged.
And I think what we should do, and I will revise my motion to say that we submit a counter offer at twenty-three sixty-four with the specifics telling them that they have another three hundred and sixty square feet of storage area that we built for them. And telling them that electric has gone up for the borough of forty-six percent, and it actually is forty-six percent. I know it's a little one geek of a percent because really it's only, but, um.
And they.
Two cents, two cents a kilo an hour, but it still is forty-six percent.
They have received free use of trash, water, sewer all these years.
Yeah, I think we should say that.
No, I will be honest, no one cares about what in the past we negotiated lease. They're going to say that's your fault.
Well, I see you.
I understand that, but I'm telling you how real estate negotiation works at commercial leases.
But, but don't, don't, don't quite say it that way. Just say that we are, now, now we are charging water and hood.
Water, sewer and trash.
Water, sewer, trash and the hood.
I think it's more important for you to say that you pay no real estate taxes associated with the lease, because they don't. You don't pay real estate taxes.
That's true, yeah, so they're.
That's a huge point too.
Not include any portion of any real estate taxes.
And, and they have always used room one oh six at no fee. That's another storage area that they have used that they were not supposed to be using.
Cooler is.
Right next to the.
Behind the cooler across the hall.
Bathroom where the rec is at the back of the room, that, that long ninety square foot room. They have used that for free for forever. And that was supposed to change, their stuff was supposed to come out, it was agreed on the last lease in twenty-two at Wood, it never came out. So now they've got another two years of free usage out of that.
Are, are we okay with the twenty-three sixty-four?
Well, Roger, that's. We're going to vote on that.
Yeah, I mean, everybody have heartburn with that.
Which way?
I still, I still think that's a good deal.
And here's something else to include in your motion. Last time we did the lease, we gave it to them in September, they did not come back until December. So there should be like a twenty-five day, have to respond, not this open-ended giving it to them because we should have this done.
Either thirty days or twenty-five days.
Before the next, before the next bar meeting.
What's, what's the length that you're proposing?
Two years.
Two years, is there an increase after the first year?
Is there what?
An increase after the first year.
No. The only thing, and again, one thing that might help sweeten the pot is if you were to give a three-year term at that rate, it might soften the blow because of the increases over three years and it's not over two. And if you don't believe there's going to be great increases, that may be a way to soften the blow of whatever increase this is, because it's extended over three years, not two.
And that would need to have a five percent increase.
You could do it after that. I'm, I'm just saying, if you lock it in for, well, that's up to you.
Five percent.
Or do you three percent per year, but he's, he's, he's going to say, I'm paying eight percent, basically eight percent increase each year, right? Because it's twenty-four percent total. So if you extend it over two years, it's going to feel less, or three years, it feels less.
Are you saying, are you saying it won't be twenty-three? Are you saying it won't be twenty-three sixty-four, it'll be something less?
I think that's what Eric is proposing.
Each year, because they proposed a five percent increase, so a five percent increase to account for, has anybody heard of inflation?
No, I'm not paying what I did two years ago for anything.
Yeah, so, um, if it's going to be a three-year lease, that built in five percent.
It would guarantee them that they would only be paying five, well, you know, you say it five percent, but, I mean.
A hundred dollars a year, I mean, is that?
Yeah, it's not.
You know, what's that?
Erica, you're surprised what your proposal is.
She did.
I think it's the same thing.
It's his motion.
It's my motion. We haven't disagreed on anything. I mean, it's, we just modified a couple of things and I think we're, I think we're in pretty good shape.
The bottom line came down at twenty-three sixty-four.
Yeah, I have that, I have that.
And five percent in the third year is not terrible because you're supposed to do two percent a year, so compounded it would actually be higher than five percent. So I don't have any problem with five percent at the end of the third year, or at the end of the second year rather, going into the third.
So there would be no, no increase for the second year?
First or second are the same, and then the third year will have a five percent increase.
Well, I'd know. If it was a two-year lease, we would be reviewing it. If it was a two-year lease, we'd be reviewing it before the end of the second year.
Right.
Yeah.
So at the end of the second year, there should be a five percent increase.
That's what I said, I thought.
Oh, I said the third.
For the, for the third.
For the third year is what I said.
Okay.
The end of the second year, beginning of the third year. You got all that?
Twenty-three sixty-four for two years plus a five percent increase per year.
Right. And I think we need to tell them as much as possible why. They're getting the three hundred and sixty square foot storage, forty-six percent increase in electric, uh, that we're paying. The hood, we're including the hood now, and the water, sewer and trash.
And no real estate taxes associated.
Yes, that's important too, and no real estate taxes.
And, and a lot of equipment that we're still paying for.
Something else? Something else, um.
Responsible.
Two meetings ago, the propane tanks were brought up. They were removed off the premises. They're back, bungee corded to the downspout. Why? That is a huge violation. They talk about exemplary, um, behavior, but that has been made very clear for a couple of years.
That needs to be in the lease or?
That needs to be written in. No propane tanks on premises ever.
Ever, I mean, they use them for their business. I understand storage.
Take them home.
But they haven't, they put them in a truck.
On the truck, but to be stored, to, to stay longer than the truck is moving to the destination, however.
They can't put in a rack?
They have a rack. Can you even take it out?
No, because we talked about that in ballards and everything that has to be done to be able to store them.
Oh, we had to back into it. Yeah, you're right now.
That is their responsibility to figure out how to store those off premises. And why? I know Public Works is there. I know Code Enforcement goes around there. Why has nobody said anything? They've been there for weeks.
They were going, um, I thought they were going. I didn't.
They were.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't take notice to it, so I will follow up.
Yeah, now it's just bungee corded, one downspout down from where it was before.
Do you have the motion? When reading it back? Sorry.
It's, the motion is to amend the first motion, which was to make a counteroffer. So your amended motion includes a total monthly lease amount of two thousand three hundred sixty-four dollars. It's going to be noted that that includes three hundred and sixty additional square feet as amended from the last lease. There was a notable electric increase between the last negotiation and this one. Make sure that, and it was noted that room one oh six is included in that. The lease will be for two years. There will be a third-year option at an increase of five percent. It's to be noted that there is no real estate tax assessed on the tenant, and the propane tanks need to be removed from the premise immediately, and that needs to be included in the lease form forward. Am I missing anything?
I think that's good.
Oh, yes. They have a time limit to reply.
Oh, yeah.
Twenty-five a day, some, so it gets to us before the packets are presented.
We got, we're heading into bargains, so we really need to. Okay, I need a second.
I'll say.
Well, or Dennis.
Yeah.
Or Dennis.
I'll send that.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How does, I bet it's aye. It's a root. Okay, cool. I think it gives them something. I mean.
I think it's very fair.
It's, oh, well, the first one was fair. This just gives them something back for negotiation, and I think it's, I think we, I think we did a, did a good job. Thank you, thank you, everybody. Yeah, and the committee did a great job too. All right, um, do business. Legal analysis code ordinances.
I'm going through this in detail, but this is for you guys to look at to make sure you're comfortable with it. A lot of it is just updating terminology, but there are some other changes that I think you guys want to look at subs under words to whether or not you're comfortable with it. This is done typically, a lot of municipalities do this, just to update the terminology, catch things that they have.
Consistent, so you're correct.
Is there a, like, is this codification in every two years, five years, ten years?
It all depends. Some municipalities do it every year. Some municipalities do it every five years. Some municipalities do it every two years. It's not, the, the cost of it isn't inconsequential, so that's why.
What is it costing?
This was, this was all budgeted and approved back in twenty-two. This is when this started. So we've been working through this since the fall of two thousand twenty-two, and it's been reported on in the manager's report periodically as we get some updates. But again, this was basically to go through the process because working with the code, we identify that there's obviously discrepancies, there's outdated language throughout the code, and that's been noted here in, in the code adoption ordinance as well as throughout. So it's basically, the goal of this is to have General Code review the code of ordinances of, of New Freedom Borough, look for inconsistencies, make sure everything aligns, and if we're seeing one thing in one ordinance in a violation in penalty section and it's a criminal offense, that it says that exact same verbiage in the next chapter for a violation in penalty section for a criminal offense. So that's just one example. There's a lot of outdated language as it relates to, you know, we'll even say Department of Environmental Resources. DCNR, DDP, things like that. So the goal of this was just to kind of clean everything up. Take all those amendments because there's a portion of time where the, the our code was not updated for numerous years as far as new ordinances being pushed to General Code. So we needed to make sure that got caught up, and that was basically in twenty-two as well. But again, it's, it's the working document. It's, it's what we're governed by. The goal here is to clean everything up, move forward, that everything's adopted under current legal standards.
Was this strictly their recommendations, or did you have input?
No, they, they went through and reviewed every single chapter, every single subsection, and generated, it was well over two hundred comments of where they not necessarily found an inconsistency, but where they found that something needed clarified, there was references that weren't valid anymore. But that is their independent review.
Mistake?
General Code.
There are a couple, I, I noticed there are a couple of mistakes right off the bat.
Well, that's why it's a draft.
Yeah.
So this is a working document. We can take a couple months.
We're all reviewing.
They can take a couple months to review this. It's a working document. I don't think we need to dive completely into it tonight. I realize everybody can, can, can take some time and review it, and I, you know, I don't know if it's something where you wanna have a, a, a separate meeting or a separate committee to kind of hash through these changes. It, it, something of this sort needs to happen, understanding that there might be some more room for additional modifications or some things that council doesn't, or does want to see.
Or doesn't understand.
Or doesn't understand, yeah, and.
There's a lot.
Again, this is not being, this is a draft. It's not being pushed upon. It's open for discussion. It's open for debate. It's open for clarification. That's what this process is about.
Why don't we take the rest, until next meeting to review it and back in, some of these you have to go back to the home reference to, and then we'll.
Oh, it's, it's, it's awful. It'll take you a week or more to go through that whole thing and compare what was and what is. I did it. It took me a week.
Who is General Code? Is that a company? Is it a?
Yeah, they're the company that provides all of our codification services. So anytime council adopts a new ordinance, we send it to them for incorporation into the, the codified ordinances. That's the Ecode three sixty that if you're on our website, you're scrolling through the code of ordinances, they're, they're maintaining that site, and they're providing those services and to the borough.
Do we, do we update them currently on new things?
Actually.
Because if you, if you look in there, there are a lot of things that, like the, what is it? Sewer and water, trash sewer, water. It's the old rate.
That, that's because those are done by resolution. Those are done by resolution.
Now they want them done by ordinance. Some things they want now done by.
No, 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 we changed that ordinance a while ago. Changed it so we can change the rates by resolution, not by ordinance.
They did just the opposite. They changed it back to ordinance.
We're gonna clean that up.
It, it, yeah, it's.
Just, we, again, we have to work through this process. It, it's, you don't have to take the whole bite at one time. We can pull these things off.
And this isn't intended to change your ordinances. It's intended to clean up the ordinances and clarify.
But it does. It changes fees from.
That's what the law is now. That's why, if you, if you listen to what Andy said, it's to make it same the whole way through, so you don't have four hundred dollars in one place, five hundred dollars in another place, and a thousand dollars in the third place. You wanna be consistent the whole way through. It's just because of when they got adopted, different councils may have not caught that or say they don't want to do this.
So we can't designate what our own fines are gonna be for.
You can, but they make them all the same. With what the maximum is today.
Sit by, by whose standard?
By, by law.
Example. We, we charged thirty-five dollars for, or thirty-five dollars for something. They changed it to twenty-five. We had.
They changed the majority of those street, I know where you're talking about.
Yeah.
The outlier is the snow emergency one, but the majority of there's a few.
Yeah, there's the snow emergency one from seventy-five back to fifty after we just changed it to seventy-five to.
We'll, we'll look at that. Yeah, maybe they didn't get that in there yet, but like, for example, where it goes from six hundred dollars to a thousand dollars is because the old code, the old borough code used to provide for a six hundred dollar maximum fine. Now it's a thousand.
But there's no minimum.
No, but you don't wanna put a minimum in.
Okay.
You know what happens?
We used to have.
MDJ gives you the minimum to the first-time offenders.
That's why all that.
Even third-world.
That's why all that.
So they're just trying to clean it up.
But that's the maximum, so they could still say five hundred, which we had in before, or they could go back to one hundred, even if we have a smaller.
That's why you guys should look at it. It's your ordinances to figure out if you're getting that or not, but the whole point was making it consistent throughout, so I'm not sure why you go back through and changing that different amounts.
Yeah.
We're doing budget. Is this a good time to be doing this?
Well, it, this can continue for a couple, three months. I mean, we don't have to worry about it right away, so, I mean, it's just, it's just on our plate and it's just being presented.
And it says, section seventy-four is amended to read as follows. Where's a redline version, so I don't have to go a hundred and fifty times and go find it and try and read word for word of what's changed, like how?
You're not gonna get one, cuz it'd be a book like this.
Mike, I, that's why I tried to provide this, and then if there's questions, generate it all for that, but the violation in penalty sections, it, they have been changed throughout to be uniform and consistent, whether it's civil or criminal matter.
I referred back to the Ecode on each and every one, got it, found where it was, and.
And, and while you're talking about that, Mayor, you, you referenced about updating them. Every time there's an ordinance done, I send that in to their supplemental, and if you look, recently, if you were in that street section, you can see it says recently adopted legis.
Oh, I, I did see that.
Not, not incorporated is the handicap park space, so they incorporate that based on their schedule, but they noted so that the public and anyone utilizing that can see that, oh, there's an ordinance that was recently done, it amends this section, but it hasn't been meshed in yet.
The thing I wondered about is we have some people that might look into that and say, wait a minute. This says I'm only supposed to be paying sixty-three dollars a month, and I'm getting billed seventy dollars, or a quarter, sixty-three a quarter.
So they actually have to go through a look at the recently amended statute ordinance and look at that. This is where you get to play the lawyer. So you get to do what I do, because you actually have to go through and read everything and read all the updated stuff, so I know everyone likes to think it's easy to be a lawyer, but actually, you get to read all this stuff and then read the stuff that it comes from, and then read the stuff in between.
That's exactly what I did, but I couldn't understand why it still said sixty-three dollars.
So I had to go to law school for three years.
All right, so anyway, we're gonna, we'll talk about it again next month.
The snow is going from seventy-five down to fifty?
Um, that was as part of trying to make things a little bit more uniform, but it's still the outlier, and I keep, when I looked at that one, was, um, based on, I think that was based on motor vehicle code reference, probably.
I'll say that in reviewing minutes, I did come across that the ticket, ticketing was fifty dollars, that York County was seventy-five, and that they made a motion to pass to raise it to seventy-five to come in alliance with the county. But now they're going back down.
I think that was twenty fourteen.
No, it was twenty twenty because I made the suggestion and council.
I'm gonna say that, something like that. You know, I, I saw it, just happened to see it, and.
It used to be.
I don't think York County would go down in their fights.
I don't know what, what they're referencing by York County. They just mean, uh, like, an average throughout the county for a, a snow emergency ticket?
This.
Parking, it was parking fines.
This is just a, again, this is a draft. If Borough Council doesn't like the numbers right here, we can certainly change them to what you like. Cuz we're gonna re-adopt the ordinance. When we adopt this, this would set whatever will council would be.
Cuz we found that people would just leave their cars sit for fifty bucks, rather pay, come down, pay the fifty bucks and go out in the snow and move it.
It, it's Borough Council's ordinance, so they need to be have to comfortable with it, so.
So whatever, whatever we decide, Dave, the decision here supersedes what's been.
Yeah, General Code is making a recommendation, and that's all, and this would modify our current code of ordinances with whatever you folks wish it to be.
Then it's a done deal unless you do it here.
Since we're doing our budgets separately this year, having separate meetings, is this something that we should probably do in a separate, another separate meeting?
We'll decide next month.
It's, it says that the fine was amended, uh, ordinance five, or ordinance two, twenty-fourteen dash one adopted May twelfth, twenty-fourteen.
Then it went back to fifty and went back up to seventy-five, cuz I know when I came on, it was fifty dollars, and we agreed to raise it to seventy-five.
Well, it wasn't done by ordinance.
I don't know what it was done by, but it was done because we had a reason.
Again, we're kind of jumping all over the place, so why don't we go ahead and take the month to review and then come back and go through it? But, you know, next month we may just form a committee, or we may decide to wait till after budgets, and that's perfectly okay too.
Yeah, we've got so much.
Solicitor report?
Uh, I guess I would just re-suggest that you consider a public comment policy because you don't have any guidance to have someone say, I'm gonna do that every meeting without a time limit. I, it's not about not being transparent or giving people their opportunity to speak. It's not, it's, it's like having a business meeting, a lot of it, that's up to Borough Council whether they wish to do that or not, but if you don't, if you don't have a policy, you can't cut anyone off. So just keep that in mind, is if you want everyone to speak, and you have a string of folks that come in here for fifteen minutes straight and harangue Borough Council, that is what they can do. At least if you have a time limit, it's a five-minute time limit.
The boroughs around us do not have a public policy comment. They put it on their agenda. About five-minute limit generally is what they do.
Well, I don't think it's, I legally don't think it's enforceable if you don't have a policy to adopt.
I'm saying what they do.
I'm telling you what my legal opinion is based on three years of law school and twenty-four years of practicing in this borough, and what I'm doing in a number of municipalities in South Central Pennsylvania.
Question. Would that be something that we could, at a later time, decide?
Absolutely, yeah. You could absolutely, you could roll back at that point in time. I, you will find.
You could always do that.
Yeah, you will find that if people, if you treat everyone the same and you put the same limit on everybody, you don't get upset, and they, they learn to make their comments in that time period, because they know that's their time period. If they don't know their time period is, and you don't shut one person down at one time and you shut another person down at a different time, it's, it's hard for the borough, it's hard for residents to learn what the policy is, and it's, it's hard for you to give a consistent reading to everybody, so.
And we are here for a business meeting, correct?
Which I've said, so.
I know. I hear you now. Now, I do have a question concerning that, since you brought it up. We had in there originally a fifteen-minute for a presentation. What?
Was this a presentation or is this just getting done in so fast that we say?
Yeah, that was not a presentation.
That's why he had a copy of it somehow. That's why he said it's a presentation.
You can define that. Typically what it is, is if you want to get. Typically, what it is, is if you want to get on and make a presentation, because you have a PowerPoint, you have some sort of, something to show Borough Council, typically you would afford that more time. If you want to define it, we can define it.
He could do that, he could bring in a computer, put out a PowerPoint, say it's a presentation, and go through the same stuff.
Absolutely.
Well, it was very clear last month, council voted to do nothing, because the Jurassic Parliament was read and so forth, the council said no. You're gonna find yourself sued, because now you want to craft a comment policy around somebody that you don't like coming, because you don't like what they say. So if you go and do that, I say you're opening yourself up to a lawsuit.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you again, but, excuse me. Based on my legal opinion, I don't believe that's the case. If you treat people differently without a policy, absolutely, you're gonna get sued. If you want to craft a policy because you have something that happens prevalently, yes, you can do that, and as long as you follow the policy consistently, you're not gonna get sued for a lawsuit.
That's where it's gonna fail, because the policy's not going to be followed consistently, and that's where you're gonna have your lawsuit.
That's not...
Well, then we're gonna have to follow it consistently, that's all.
If you're, if you're not, if you're not gonna have it, though, it's either a free-for-all or it's not. And one way to not have it be a free-for-all is to have something in place that you can point to and say, everyone has to go like this policy.
This is the beginning. I mean, he'll do it a couple of meetings in a row, somebody else sitting out there saying, next meeting I'll be, and I'm gonna take his place, because I got a different right, and I'm gonna take a half hour, forty-five minutes, and, and we're gonna be going back through this stuff again. There's gotta be a policy, David's right, where we're consistent, everybody gets treated the same.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong...
Economize on words, if you've got to take a half hour, economize on words, get your void across.
Nobody's taking a half hour, and it's been pretty clear, approximately five minutes. People have honored that when he has taken the time to gavel them or tell them time's up, they've been respectful and stopped.
You can't always count on that, Erica.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I'm very finished.
The council discussed this last month, and it was voted no.
It was a tie.
It wasn't a tie.
It was a tie?
No, it was not a tie.
Yeah, I would...
The council voted no, that they didn't want to constrain the free speech just because you don't like it. That is not your choice. It doesn't matter if he comes in here, we met every week.
It's not First, it's not First Amendment, it's not First Amendment if you are regulating time, place, and man.
Wait, if you give everybody the same amount of time...
You're trying to work it in from that, what was there about you do not like the speech, that is all this council's up here trying to do, and I'm telling you, that is wrong. Just because you don't like it, there is the PA law, there is other things, and you could have it on here, that, there's a five-minute limit, and that's all I have to say.
I brought this up well before Mr. Taylor came in too, and I've done this in other municipalities.
You recommended that we do it.
Yeah, that's exactly right. So it, it is not, this is not new for me, and this is not to curtail his language, but you've had town hall meetings for as long as I've been here, and they went on and on and on, and had no sort of regulation whatsoever. And that was well before Mr. Taylor even thought about it.
Yep.
That comes down to facilitator of the meeting.
Again, how do you facilitate without a policy? How do you treat one person differently than another without a policy?
Because on the agenda, five minutes, that's what you have.
On what basis? You just throw five minutes on there and not have a policy to refer to?
That's what all the boroughs around us are doing.
Okay, and I'm just telling you, I believe you're, you should back yourself up with a policy, so if anyone asks for it, or the right to remember a request, or the court order, or a reporter comes in, you have...
But, um, the public comment policy back on the agenda for next month.
Question, since you brought that up, on our public policy we had, or at the discretion of the president, is that appropriate, or do you have to just keep it to five minutes?
That's about a presentation.
I thought it was in general for the whole pair of...
I will, I will tell you that many municipalities have that sort of language. If it is a community discussion that is going on about an extremely important issue, they will let it go. If it's a general person who wants to ramble, they will oftentimes cut them off at five minutes. It is at their discretion. And it may feel like...
Are you treating people differently at that point?
Exactly.
That's, that was my question, aren't we?
You are, but it's, the question is whether or not it's furthering the purposes of the meeting, where it's someone rambling about a personal issue, that they might be better handled with the staff, or might be better handled with a lawsuit, or whatever it is.
Especially if it's on the agenda.
What would have been different?
Nothing would have been different tonight, unless you would have had a line of those folks here, and you'd be, you're here till twenty o'clock, listening to them, not getting any Borough business.
I don't, I don't understand, why would it not have been different? Because supposedly, if we redo this, it should be items on the agenda for public comment first.
Unless, no, that's not what it says. Again, back of your public policy comment is that you have a public comment period...
Well, that is in the partnering procedure of an agenda.
And then let's, let's go back to some, Robert's rules of order is not Pennsylvania law. Does everyone understand? It still doesn't supersede Pennsylvania law in any way, shape, or form. It's how you conduct your meeting, it doesn't supersede Pennsylvania law.
Every other borough uses that as the first public comment.
The PA laws is... But PA law says you have to just, I'm just saying designated.
Or, and other stuff.
This is, this is borough code, borough code is PA law.
Where does, where does borough code say that the first one has to...
I can't pull it out of my...
Well, you keep citing to it, I'd like to know the citation, so I can review it.
I will, I will send it to you.
Thank you. Because I'm pretty sure it doesn't say that.
Managers report.
I want a, I want a suggestion. We've talked about putting public statements on there, and I think that, again, is very confusing for the residents. You do what you want, but this gentleman came in and said, why is my public statement not in the minutes? If you set a precedent for that, for Borough Council members, or certain members of Borough Council, of the residents, again, you're, you're starting to treat people differently.
It's common, it's common sense.
Right.
It's, you're right, she just said it, it's up to the discretion of council, we can say no. We, you can say no.
Again, I, I'm just pointing out the fact that...
I didn't say no.
It's up to the discretion of...
That's what we did, we did, made a motion that wouldn't be included, everybody suggests.
Mr. Taylor asked that his statement, people are like, did he not?
I don't remember.
He did.
He asked, asked Andy that the very first thing he said in his public comment.
About last meeting.
About last meeting. All I'm saying is, is...
Did we vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay, so we vote mine and say no?
No, I'm sorry.
We did not vote on it.
Right.
Nobody made a mark.
Oh, so, so, he's going to push, he's going to push this now, he drove, he potentially drove more of your Borough Council members off of the board. If you think he's not coming back, we're going to try that again, you can do what you want.
So, so what's your public policy gonna do? He's gonna come back and do it again?
You give him five, you give him five minutes, and you say, thank you, Mr. Taylor, for your comment, we'll see you at next month's meeting. That's what people do.
He's gonna do that anyway, I mean, he didn't stay, I don't think he stayed over five minutes, I mean, it...
Would you say he didn't stay over five, over five minutes? He went twenty minutes.
Yeah, the whole, the whole... And then it came running back in and disrupted your meeting.
Right.
It's your, it's your public, it's your public council, it's your Borough Council meeting, do whatever you want. I'm at, I'm making some suggestions that I've seen other municipalities do to help rein in the meeting, that's all I'm saying.
I agree.
I disagreed originally, I think at this point, you're right. We need to, we need to do something.
I, five minutes is reasonable, I mean, you know, and then you can't have...
And if somebody does request a fifteen-minute presentation, give them fifteen, give them twenty, whatever.
Well, yeah, I think the council needs to approve presentations, like, if somebody's coming to talk to us about a dog park or something like that, that's a presentation. If somebody's just coming to rein and raid, that's not a presentation. Has to be Borough business.
And you're constraining the speech of the citizen that wants to come to speak.
No, they, no, they get five minutes to speak, and then if it's a, if it's not a...
This isn't a filibuster public comment, it's just a brief public comment.
Remove him from the situation. I'm talking, anybody, anybody that comes, you're gonna decide, um, no, it's not a presentation, I don't deem that one, you can't speak.
Well, if it's about a specific topic, then yeah, I would say it's a presentation, but if it's just a ramble, that's not a presentation.
So either you're gonna let the president be the facilitator, or you're not. I mean, you've said that many times, have you not?
He is now, he is, or is it now? That paper isn't gonna help him any.
It, it will, because it gives him a guidance to say, we're done in five minutes.
We can even put a clock right here and hit the button for five minutes.
I have municipalities that have timers, we have timers.
I will order...
Spring Garden Township has it up on their computer screens, and they hit the button, and when you're at five minutes, they tell you, you're done.
Hit your phone.
Again, all I am is a lawyer, I don't, I, you only make suggestions, I don't pass anything.
No, you're good.
Well, you ran on not limiting people, and now you're limiting people.
I don't think it limits people, it's at a time of five minutes. I mean, most people can cover...
There's gonna be a lot more than five minutes in there, there's gonna be a lot, there's a lot more in there than just five minutes, that you are constraining the people that wanted to come here to speak, and...
You know what? If he wants to come in at the end of public comment and go on for an hour, let him do it, we can get up and leave, I don't think there's anything that says we have to be here. That's the general public comment at the end.
You have to adjourn the meeting.
You were elected whether you like the speech of the citizen or not, period. That was very inappropriate to say, you'll just get up and leave, that wasn't right. It doesn't matter what you say...
Continue the meeting to the next week, it's eleven o'clock, we can set a, you can set a time for the meeting to, to be over, at the beginning of every meeting.
All right, we're not, we're not making a headway, we'll talk about it.
If I may, I want to be very clear, I truly believe in public discourse, and I believe that local government is to hear out your, your residents, and your, how Borough Council hear them, and to discuss things as a Borough Council. I don't have any issue with that at all, and you're right, people may not like what he says, but you didn't hear me stopping what he was saying tonight, because he has the right to say what he said. As a public official, unfortunately, you get the good end of that, because they may not like what you do, they may not agree with you. All I'm saying is, there are acceptable regulations under the sunshine law, the United States Supreme Court law, as it relates to First Amendment and public meetings. And all I'm suggesting is that you use some of those tools to have your meetings be more orderly, that's all I'm saying.
Well, this kind of goes along with these ordinances, you can't craft an ordinance just because you don't like that. All you're doing over here now is you're gonna craft this...
Absolutely, you can change, you can change an ordinance because you don't like it. There's no reason a legislative body can't change an ordinance they don't like.
Because you want to correct something somebody's doing, you've told us you can't do that, just because X over here is doing this wrong, you can't now create an ordinance.
Against that person, to have someone else do it, you absolutely can do that.
This is all you're doing, you're crafting a, a public comment...
The school board has, has time limits.
That's it.
It's just a five-minute time limit.
It, it's not, it's not against, it's, I don't know, it's clear to me what, what the motive here is, and no matter if you like what he says or don't like what he says, it's wrong.
If everybody knows they're gonna get the same amount of time before they show up and sit in that seat, they could tailor their discussion present, whatever you want to call it, to spring it in in five minutes, get to the point and do it, but everybody's gonna get treated the same, and it's not like, well, we're gonna spring it on when he comes in and says, oh yeah, by the way, you get five minutes.
Put it on the agenda, use the gavel, five minutes is up, it's that simple, but there's gonna be a lot more added in to this public comment, and that's where the issue comes from.
Well, let's wait and see what...
I saw it last month, I saw that, I saw what it was gonna be.
Well, you guys can mark it up, is whatever, if you're uncomfortable with something, take it out, that's, that's what I said two weeks ago.
Yeah.
If you didn't like something in there, but you should have basic, just have the basic guidelines, so that there is something to be...
All we want, all we're saying is that it's going to be basic, it's not gonna have a lot of fluff to it, it's just gonna be a public comment policy, and it's gonna be several, a couple, three lines, it's not gonna be amended. Managers report.
Just one item of clarification, you're talking about approval of minutes, council did approve the minutes as presented tonight without the statement, so it was considered. The minutes were...
Oh, right, right.
Yeah. Right. Everybody has a copy of the August twenty twenty-four managers report, as well as the grant update report, if there's any questions, I can answer then, hopefully. Just one note on the hazard mitigation grant, again, that was for stormwater improvements up on Bailey Avenue. Due to, um, current needs of FEMA, they have directed their hazard mitigation funds to projects in emergency need, um, so that basically puts their hazard mitigation funds on hold. So this happened before with this grant, if you recall, and it's, it's been paused again, so there's, that's updated in that grant report, and unfortunately, it's probably gonna stay like that for some time, and, you know, I believe that we should probably look for separate funding at this point for that project, or consider it in upcoming budget years.
Can I get a copy of the new freedom heritage lease? Can I have one please?
Yeah, yeah, it's in draft form, and it basically took the, the current lease that was with New Freedom Heritage, and really only updated the terms of the lease, everything else was just basically a clean, a clean draft. That was sent to them for, for their review as well, but I can send that out to you.
Do we, do we actually charge them?
No, it's a dollar, yeah. And the, the previous lease was twenty years, I think we decided to, to make a lot more sense to go longer term than, than twenty years.
What were the views from Alliance Club after discussing future usage and upgrades for Margie Goodfellow Park?
They provided feedback on some of the proposed layouts following the feasibility study, so the goal there is, and I think we've all come together and, and realized that relocating a bunch of buildings does not really make sense, but the Alliance Club would be in favor of possibly looking at where the buildings are now, a larger building that would house all of their needs, as well as the other community needs. And again, that's all just preliminary discussion, nothing set in stone, um, but it will all be presented to council through the feasibility study and master site.
When will we expect to see that?
Uh, the feasibility study, I believe, is ninety-nine percent complete, I think it just needs one more review of the committee, or, I'm sorry, the, the group of individuals, residents that were appointed to review that feasibility study, and then, once that's completed, we present it to council, but it's just in final draft form at this point.
Are we advertising those, um, Margie Goodfellow meetings?
No, they're not open to the public, they're a working group, despite others inviting themselves.
That's what we discussed, discussed at the last meeting, and asked that they be...
Apparently discussed.
Asked that, that at least members of council would notify, right?
That was about sewer, citizens can't go to wrecked floor meetings, I'm sure.
All meetings of the borough.
This is a working group of the, um...
You're talking about the feasibility study?
Yeah.
Because that's what he's talking about.
Is there any sewer, uh, meetings planned?
Yeah.
And you'll notify council when one gets scheduled?
That's what was in the minutes from the last one.
Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
I don't have one thing, let's keep it short. Erica, please question.
Yeah, there have been some deaths at Giant, um, they got the plate number, and they have solved that, overtime's up, there's been, um, some, um, people that are out, injury, vacation, so forth, so that's up a little bit. Glen Rock had a stabbing, and that was, uh, taken care of, that person was taken to jail.
So domestic.
Officer Wa, who was here this evening, is now a bicycle officer, so he has started a, um...
So he has started a, um-
Could.
Around town certain times. You'll see him with his bicycle on the back of his vehicle. Uh, he, he's in certification. Resolution 2024-1 to withdraw from PMRS on October 1st, 2024 was passed. Uh, the MMO for 2024 is $197,001. Four-state A, uh, the MMO for 2025 for PMRS is $225,894. We did receive a resignation from Officer Sailor. And he will be with us for a couple more months as he goes through his saved leave. And we're actively pursuing a York City officer, about six years of service. And, um, because the consortium was canceled because there wasn't enough people. So our officers know, um, he's on the quick cert team with one of our officers. So they're aware of him, they like him. He's done some, uh, ride-alongs and, um, I believe a conditional offer has been given. So hopefully that will look forward.
Officer Sailor is the last one hired, right? Was he the new? How long's he been in the service? I thought he was fairly new.
Officer Sailor, correct?
He has, it's not the new guy?
Officer Wa is the new one that was here this year.
Oh, okay.
And then, uh, Kim, I didn't report it last month. Uh, the commission voted that she will move to full-time starting this week. Kim was the part-time. She's been here for five years. So she's moving to the full-time position.
Happened after, after this. And it has nothing whatsoever to do with the police report. But Diane, who was out here as a receptionist, she, her last day was Friday.
Oh, she retired? I knew she was going to retire. Her husband, I think. Did you hear her report?
If Dave wants to, can I bring up one thing that's going to come up under zoning enforcement? And it happens to be one of our, my development, one of our residents, Brenda Tanner. Uh, and she was to have done something by the 21st of August with regard to fixes on her property. Move the car has been done. So I guess my question for Dave is, if that's the case, can it automatically go into the DJ? Or do we have to do something else now?
So, and we tried to find her at several different locations. All the letters came back. I'm running, we have a skip trace program that we can use to find, we hope, good, good addresses on folks to give them notices. We can file with the MDJ, but if they can't serve them, they're not going to schedule here.
Well, she's been there before. I mean, if, if a person knows they're going to get a letter and they have to sign the card when they get it and they say, not signing it.
Yeah, I sent, we send it both. Do you send it both?
Yes.
Yeah, we send it both certified and regular. If they don't return, if, if certified goes unclaimed, but the regular mail goes and is not returned, is undeliverable to sender, it's deemed to be unserved in three days of the mailing. So that's, so we send it both so that if someone, like you said, if someone's smart enough for, to know that they don't, they're not going to sign for the certified mailing, we send it the other way. And if they comes, if it doesn't get some deliverable, come, doesn't come back as undeliverable, it's deemed to be served. But the DJ, the MDJ's office has to say, I mean, if we, we can send the notices. But when we file that citation, they'll just keep sending it. And if it keeps, comes back, if they never get served, they never schedule here. That's the way the MDJ does it. So then you have to figure out whether there's a council will serve them, but we're not in the area. You have to figure out where they're at to get them served at that, at that location. If it's out of state, that's the issue as well. So like, we could know. That's one we could give notice and know and post and those sorts of things.
I mean, we're beyond mowing now at this, this particular residence now. And I understand, I mean, I don't live next door across the street from her, but-
We're, we're running the skip trace, we have access through LexisNexis to the database to try to get them. So Andy gave me those la, last week. And we're going to try to follow up and get that, the address on.
Because I'll get asked. I'd like to have the DC news.
Yep, that's, that's where we're at. We, we are trying to find her. We sent, what, three? Two or three? Two or three different locations. They're all coming back as up there.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Warehouse, any questions? Era? Water system? Waste water treatment plant? It's late to see nobody. Favorite zoning and code enforcement permit report? Code enforcement? Question?
While you're looking, number 21. How many, this is a new owner in the last, I don't know, few months. How many times has this light issue been going on at this owner? Is this the first time for this one or is that the third?
First time for this one, yeah. And the other time that that was sent, it was the light, the light in the window. This was actually the, the outstanding sign after.
They, they not have a timer on the light?
I think it was one of those things that, as Erica said, it was a new owner. They might have changed the timer or not known about the regulations, so, um-
Has it been resolved?
We have not received any additional complaints. And I did speak with the power of property here last week. And I, I haven't seen it as well. So at this point, I believe that they got the notice, they complied. If there's additional complaints, then we will handle that through the sample units.
Is it 11:00 P M.?
Maybe it is 11:00, yeah.
And on at five, six?
You don't know that one. I always just knew because of the field lights had to be off at 11:00.
I'm just thinking it was seven, but-
Seven? I guess it'll wonder if you know.
I'd have to pull it off to be exactly sure.
Just for reference.
Sure. Motion, 11 and 6.
6 A M.
Yeah.
Any other questions on code enforcement?
Yeah, the, the name of that, um, company, that's the same name they were using before?
Yes. It's the one they, they keep changing managers.
I thought it was the owner.
It, it was me.
They sold, yeah, they sold the business. They just kept the same name.
So you kept the same, okay. I don't know if you can do that, if you had to start a new LLC, so to speak.
The property's still in that name, and that's where we sent the code enforcement.
I'm not sure if they just changed one digit because we're looking.
Let's put it this way. Instead of name and names, which we don't like to do, the one above that, that, uh, that person, no longer lives there.
Sold the houses.
The house is up for sale.
Sold the houses for sale.
So I don't know if, I know they, that somebody moved it, but in the future, you're going to have a problem.
On the corner?
Yeah.
It, it has real estate signed it, right?
Yes.
So they would just call it real estate.
I, I don't know if she moved. I know he did, he has moved. Recreation report? I'm sorry, subdivision, land development?
We, as noted when we sent out the information in the meeting packet, we did have the New Haven plan preliminarily on the agenda for council's consideration tonight. But we did have some issues that were not resolved in time. And I believe everyone received a copy of the email that I, I sent to the developer. We are going to have a meeting with that developer, along with the engineer, to resolve those couple of outstanding items so that the, while it's still a preliminary plan that we're not issuing a conditional approval for a plan in development, and then we have the framework to go back 10 years from now on things that need to be addressed. So that was the goal of not getting that on the agenda tonight. There was a request to add that, for council to consider adding that to the agenda for October 7th. That is advertised as our budget meeting, our first budget meeting. It's still a meeting of council, it's still a public meeting. But that is up, that, I would suggest a motion to add that to the agenda for consideration. We would, we would publicize that as well. If not, October 7th, I believe, would be, is our first budget meeting. And then in the next meeting, the monthly meeting of our council is scheduled for October 21st. And then a separate secondary budget meeting, I think, around April 4th.
That's right. Um, actually-
I guess, uh, email these dates like this week?
Yeah, they were in the managers' report last month about the upcoming budget meeting. But I can send out, I can send out reminder invites. Um, that's not a problem.
Yeah. What was, what's the time of those?
They're all, so we kept, because we added two budget meetings, we kept everything at 6:30. That way there's no confusion.
Oh, there's to, you have a borough meeting on weekends, though? Just to mention that.
No.
Oh, no.
We might do that.
Yeah.
I got confused with the date you were saying. New Haven's having an open meeting that we can attend, or you're talking about the budget?
No, he wants to add, uh, they requested that we add their approval to our budget meeting. And we can do that. We can just put it on an agenda and publish it and say we're going to discuss that at that meeting. Or we could say, no, they have to wait until the next meeting. The whole idea behind not doing it tonight was rather, rather than have a bunch of exceptions or, you know, that we don't want to have to track those and see if they did them and check the plans back. We want to just do it all in one shot. It makes it easier on Wade, it makes it easier on council, so.